Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is an emergency city council meeting pursuant to section fifty-five, five-five-one point zero four-five of the Texas government code. Basically stating that the Laredo City Council will hold an emergency meeting at four thirty. It's four thirty-two P M on this Wednesday, February the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And we're meeting, we're meeting virtually. Some of us are here at the offices of the city, eleven ten Houston Street, but, but also virtually. And of course, we're here in Laredo, Texas. So I mean, the pledge of allegiance and also a moment of silence. Your, your audios, please, if, 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 if you're not reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moment of silence for any particular intention, obviously, the COVID and for relief that we need from this energy emergency and there's also this winter storm emergency that has fallen upon the entire state of Texas and our city as well. Thank you so much. Please be seated or take your places. A roll call, please, Mr. Secretary.
Mayor Pete Science. Mayor Pro Temp Rudy Gonzalez, Jr. Think, I think he's here. Also, Mayor Vidal Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Martinez.
Joe.
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp, we, we got you. Thank you. President, Councilmember Alberto Torres, Jr.
Present.
Councilman Ruben, Ruben Gutierrez, Jr.
Present.
Councilman Dr. Martin Martinez.
Here.
Councilman, but it's a Perez.
Present.
Councilman Alisa Sierra.
Present.
There you have a form.
I thank you very much having a form. We proceed and we just have this emergency item here and then I'll read it for the record. It's an urgent public necessity exists for calling this emergency meeting. People that are not speaking at this point, please mute your, your audios. Thank you. Again, it's, yeah, let me read the item. An urgent public necessity exists for calling this emergency meeting as immediate action is required of the city council to address community mitigation measures related to the extended power and water outages occurring throughout the city caused by the unprecedented winter storm. And, and entering such other directives as may be necessary to protect the public health and welfare of the city and its residents. This is requested by council member Alberto Torres, Jr., council member Vidal Rodriguez, council member Ruben Aguilar, Jr., and council member Rudy Gonzalez, Jr. And obviously, I concur with such actions asked by these council members. So we're moving forward. We do have people from A E P. I suspect that we need a, you all need to hear from them. I know their, their time is also very very necessary in other areas and they've made the time necessary for us to to have their, they report to us and vice versa for us to ask questions of them. I know we've, Ms. Ms. Olga Maldonado did say as she was here, those with A E P, would you all please state your names and your positions within the A E P organization, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor. This is Tony. I'll, I'll begin, Mayor. Good afternoon. Tony Arson, manager of external affairs, A E P Texas here in Laredo. We do have our representatives from our executive leadership team. I'll ask Judith Alavera, our president and C O O to introduce her and their other executive teams present today. Good afternoon, Judith.
Thank you, Tony. And Mayor, thank you very much for having us and council member as well. Thank you all very much for giving us an opportunity to visit with you today. Joining me on the call is Jeff Strassner. He is our vice president of distribution operations as well as Julio Reyes, who's our vice president of external affairs.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us on short notice, but of course, we, we all have been acting on short notice since the storm hit. So with the council's permission, now I would ask that you all please give us a report to see what the, the current status is for the, for our region, for our city in particular. And then, and any suggested solutions, whether immediate or long term.
Just real quick, I forgot Olga Maldonado, region manager of customer service is also on the, I don't think she's on video, but I know you introduced her, but Olga is, you, you work also on, is that correct, Olga?
I am, Tony. Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, welcome, welcome all of you. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, please direct your people and see who's, who's going to speak first or, or in what order.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor. Like I said, we've been obviously communicating with you all the past three days, but again, thank you, as Judith mentioned, for the opportunity to give an update from our executive leadership team. I'd like to ask Judith Alavera to begin with her remarks and continue with the other executives at this time.
Thank you, Tony. I appreciate that. And again, Mayor Science, thank you very much for having us and council. Sorry that we have to come to you and meet with you during these difficult times. I do want to say thank you to Olga and Tony because I know they've been working very hard. They're locally trying to keep y'all updated on the situation. You know, first, let me say that we do recognize what a difficult, you know, time this is for many people across our service territory and not just ours, but the entire state of Texas. I think, like you said, Mayor, this is an unprecedented, you know, weather event. And with this kind of severe winter weather, you know, it presents its own set of challenges, but then when we're faced with, you know, without electricity, right? That, that just creates many more difficult. Please know that this is not something that we take lightly. We take a lot of pride in being able to provide reliable service, you know, to our customers and to our community. So this has been a very difficult time and we do recognize that it has created a lot of difficulties for many people out there. We are doing what is necessary to follow the orders from ERCOT in order to maintain the stability of the system as a whole. Why we have had to reduce the load on our system. I'm happy to say this evening that started, ERCOT has started sending directives allowing him to put some load back on the system. And we are starting to make, you know, some positive movements in that. Obviously, it is nowhere near enough yet. There is still a shortage of generation capacity in ERCOT, you know, as a whole, and that's what's created this issue. And that's what's created the potential risk to the system and the need to reduce some of that load because the demand was frankly just more than was available to serve it. You know, at the end of the day, that's what the problem was.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead. Sir. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we'll sort the questions. Yeah, we'll feed in and out.
Yes, and we are here to answer your questions. So please.
Quick question for you. One of the problems that were, or at least the, the problem that we're facing with the local community is sort of the, the differences of what you're hearing from ERCOT, from the government and from A E P. And we're getting these mixed messages, if you will, of who has the authority, who has the authority to do these rolling blackouts and who doesn't have the authority. And so because of it, when you're saying that there are, that ERCOT urged you to reduce the load, what, what they didn't, what, what we're hearing is that, that you still, within that load, had an ability to switch or at least roll some of these blackouts throughout the community. And so, so the question that I have for you is, did you have the authority to do rolling blackouts locally? As long as you held underneath the threshold given to you by ERCOT?
Okay, so short answer is yes. That is something that we are responsible for doing, right? ERCOT sends us the directive for how much load we have to reduce on our system. It is, you know, then we have to, we're the ones who reduce the load ourselves on the distribution system. Given the magnitude of the requests that have come in, we have not had the flexibility to rotate the outages.
And, and is this because of the cold start of different circuits? In other words, if you had to do these rolling blackouts and you were to take down one circuit or two circuits and you were to turn on two new circuits, would that be too much of a colding, a, a draw, a colding crank, if you will, draw on the circuit? Is that why there was a decision made to not do a rolling blackout?
No, sir. And a decision was not made, you know, necessarily proactively that we were not going to do rotating outages. We could not rotate outages. We didn't have enough flexibility, enough circuits left on the system to rotate.
Okay, well, Mr. Arson, two years ago or three years ago, we, you sat before us when something exactly the same as what's happening today happened. And you told us that the circuits that you were creating were going to prevent this from happening yet again. And now we're here two years later and we're sitting, you're sitting in front of us again and telling us again that it's a lack of circuits that have resulted in your inability to rotate these rolling blackouts. My question for you is, why two years later, when we've given every support that we possibly could, are we here again with citizens cold, frustrated, without water or electricity? And we're once again stating that it's a lack of circuitry on the, on the part of A E P when we asked directly if this was going to happen yet again. And I know this is an unprecedented type of event, but we knew that there was a potential because we've seen it before. Just two years ago, we saw this. We've seen it in the summer. How long is it going to be until we don't see this anymore? I know we're in an exponential growth phase, but, but the city's doing everything it possibly can to get you the grid that you need, the land that you grid, you need to create this grid. I, I, I need to understand the circuitry because the people of Laredo are watching us and they're very upset at the fact that we weren't able to provide services and they think it's the city's responsibility. They think it's A E P's responsibility. They think it's ERCOT. They think it's everybody's. But now we're finding out that it truly is A E B's, A E P's inability to have enough circuits onboard to be able to transfer this load. So the question is, why is that happening?
This is Olga Maldonado. It is not a circuitry issue. It is a generational issue. Our poles, our wires, our transformers at this point are in good condition. If we have the ability to have additional generation on our system, we would be turning things on. So it is the issue that supply does not meet the demand. And so because of that, ERCOT has asked that we load shed and our system is fine. Our circuitry is fine. We need to be able to transfer those electrons, you know, through our wires to the customer, and that is the part that we do not have. Back when Tony sat with you on the Del Mar issue, he was correct. We had, we needed that additional flexibility of more circuits out of the Del Mar station, which you all helped us with, and we thank you for that. Right now, the issue is not the ability to reroute circuits. Would the, the issue is that we do not have the ability to, when we first did the initial load shed, talking to our planning people, we have a total of thirteen hundred megawatts in the whole Laredo district. In the first load shed, we took down two hundred and eighty-two megawatts. So that's about twenty-two percent of our whole district load. So when you talk about a cold load pickup, when we have a circuit that is down and we are trying to transfer load, it's not the issue of whether it's on the system at this point. The issue is that once you try to pick up cold load in our area where we have a lot of heating related to heat pumps, that the, if you drop three megawatts and you try to pick up another circuit, that is equivalent in usage to three megawatts. At the onset, you're not picking up three, you're picking up about one and a half times that much, or it's a multiple because of the heating elements. So the cold load adds that much more to the ability to put that in. So we have to be very conscientious about if you drop a circuit, are you going to be able to pick it up later or now you've augmented the, the problem. In addition to that, because we have had so many inroads into the amount of load shed that we've had, we wind up with circuits that already have priority accounts on there. So we need to be very strategic about whether we can dump water pumping stations or sewer lift stations. I know you all have had either active service or you have yours on generators, but we've been very careful about what we have. And Jeff, I don't know from your side if you want to add something to that.
Yes, Mayor. If I may, real quick, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, hold on. I think Ruben Gutierrez, council member Ruben Gutierrez had his hand up before yours and then we can.
All right.
Yes, it's a lesson. And then I think we have Alberto Torres as well, a council member for District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Councilmember Ruben Gutierrez for the record. Ms. Maldonado, you answered most of the questions that people are having. But fact of the matter is, we'd like a timeline of when do you think this will be back up and running? We've had people for four days, three and a half days now without electricity. Now, we are getting countless emails, calls, text messages that we need to be returning that people want an answer. Would you all be able to give us an answer as far as when this electricity will be back up again? And can you please explain to the public in layman's terms? Because I'm sure there's a lot of people listening to this right now that want to have an answer as to why we don't have rolling blackouts. Doc just asked you a couple of minutes ago and, and I appreciate your response, but if you could please explain it in layman's terms so people could understand that are watching this exactly why you can't do rolling blackouts or rolling, uh, rolling power outages when that was the initial plan and why that changed completely.
Councilman, this is Jeff Strassner. Can you hear me? Do you mind if I?
Certainly can. Thank you.
Got it, that one. I'm a vice president of our distribution operations. So most of those trucks you see running around in Laredo fall under my responsibility and, and I'd like to to take a shot at that one. You know, my guys there are as frustrated as you and your constituents are about wanting to know when this is going to end because what we do best is keep the lights on and get them on when they go out. But you have to have generation to be able to get the lights on. So I, I cannot give you an answer on when we think this is end until we know when the, the statewide problem of lack of generation is, is going to be solved. We see them make small steps every day and then as the sun goes down and solar falls off and wind dies down, we see that generation falling back off. So we need some of those large fossil fuel plants around the state to get back online. And there's over thirty gigawatts of generation that's offline right now. So, so we are in an unprecedented situation. So I'm, I'm hopeful every day that we wake up and that generation is going to come on and it's going to stay on. And our guys are going to be running all over town, switching customers back on. But that being said, I can't give you a date, but let me go and talk about the, the rolling feeder situations. There's free, we have identified sixteen circuits approximately in the city of Laredo that is a part of our load shedding plan that we would go down that list of circuits when the time came, when the need was to drop load. And any plans that we ever made called for going about halfway down that list. And when you got halfway down the list, then you still have the other half of the list to, to rotate with. You can take the first half down, the second half stays on. You know, after a few hours, you take the first half back up and the second half back down. We have been asked to shed, shed so much load that we went through our entire list of circuits that we had made available for the load shedding process. Now, it's not every circuit in the city of Laredo and right now only twenty-six percent of the customers in the city of Laredo are without power. And the most we've had off over there is around thirty-three to thirty-five percent. So then that gets to the question about, well, why wouldn't that other sixty-seven percent in the dark at, at some time? Well, there's two reasons. One reason is that we had to set aside twenty-five percent of our load as last ditch, last resort circuits. So they're identified on a special list called under frequency list. And that's to keep the Texas grid from going down. We have to do that across our entire footprint, identify, you know, twenty-five percent, that's basically a no touch list. Well, you say, okay, that twenty-five percent plus that list of sixteen that you talked about, Mr. Strassner, that doesn't add up to to all the circuits within the city of Laredo and you'd be right on because there's a middle group in there and Olga Maldonado referred to them a little bit while ago, and that's the critical load accounts. And so we try our hardest not to ever touch those accounts, though, as you know, within this load shedding activity, there's been some critical load that we've had to take offline. So we exhausted our load shed list. We've got the no touch list over there, the under frequency, and then we got this group in the middle that's a critical load. And I wish all our critical load was all located in the same part of town to where we could just run, you know, a half a dozen circuits to them and, and say, we're never going to touch those circuits.
Excuse me real quick.
As you know, we've got critical load all over the city, you know, from nursing homes to water and wastewater and so forth. And so that's, that's kind of the quandary we're in. We went through the entire list and I'm sorry, councilman, I didn't mean to cut you off, but let me finish real quick and give you the floor back. You know, we went through our entire list. We tripped all those folks off. We are slowly trying to bring them back on. We brought six of those circuits back on over time. You know, and in the meantime, we're trying to find some of those critical accounts here that still got, oh, twenty-two thousand customers in the city of Laredo that are still without power.
Thanks, sir, for that answer. I appreciate that.
This council member Rodriguez, please go ahead and then we'll have a council member Albert Torres.
And at this point, I really want to know because I was here three years ago or two years ago when it was said that they were going to do the expansion for the services in A E P or area. And mainly it'll be in my district. That's one of the issues I'm having is who chose the loads and who chose the circuitry of what goes on and what goes off. And if you're telling me that it's hard to dictate the grid system and what goes down and if you have to bring in one down, you have to take, it takes two grids or two platforms for it to be, to be picked up for it so it won't overload. Then at this point, then why don't we just shut down two of them and gradually bring them up? I mean, we're going to have to rotate the system. I mean, we have, even though you're talking about critical or non-critical areas of the city, I mean, to us, every area of the city is critical because in every of the, in every area of the city, we have elders, we have newborns, we have kids, we have people with underlying conditions. And that's not happening. At this point, I can tell you, I myself am a resident right now that's going from, since ever this started, going over three days without no light and nothing has come up. And imagine me, me being at a young age or not so young age, but me withstanding that coateness, what about my elders that are down there? Nobody has told him anything. You came up with facts that we're going to do rollouts in forty-five minutes to one hour, then that hour went to two hours. And it has, it has been a bunch of nonsense. I mean, literally just tell the people, you know what, it's not going to come out in the next three or four or five days. So at least people can prepare for what's coming or what they need to do so that they could take care of their elderly, so they could take care of the kids instead of just eating them on like a kid or lead them on on a race where it's not going to end. I mean, at this point, it's, and then maybe it's not even for A E P. This is for the city. What do we do? How do we take action that did, this doesn't happen again within the city of Laredo?
Yes, sir. That's good feedback and, and I appreciate those comments. I'll, I will say that, you know, I'm looking at the parts of Laredo that are out and, and it's all over. I mean, the, the issue that that Olga and Tony and you guys were talking about a while ago, I think was in the Del Mar area. So I'm assuming council you, when you said you were affected by what happened a couple of years ago, I made a bad assumption on my part, but you know, when I'm looking at, at circuits and pardon me for looking away, I'm looking at my computer screen about circuits that are out, you know, there's Anna Street, there's Wash Laredo plant, the, the power plant up there on the north side.
Santo Niño would be Councilman Rodriguez's area. Santo Niño substation, that's the one in the south. It's a Santo Niño substation, council, and I would work with you on to, to, that we're working on an expansion.
Santo Niño is, it has a circuit out right now. Yep. And on that list of sixteen I mentioned a while ago, there's, there's two Santo Niño feeders on that. Here from my view, and I'm not sitting there in Laredo, but it does appear from my view that we've got folks out all over the system, all over the city and that, you know, our circuit list is spread out all over the city.
Or maybe this is a question for Tony or Ms. Maldonado. I mean, you could tell me the percentage of how many people are out in my area and who chose to shut down my area and not alternate with other areas?
Bill, I'll take that because they didn't have any input into that. Again, we had a list of sixteen feeders.
And I know, but couldn't you get the, the dialogue from your local representatives? I mean, they do live in the area. They do know what's going on. As you said, you're looking from far away. I mean, at this point, it would have been proper should somebody would have gotten some local impact or some local input into what's going on.
Yes, sir. And, and we do our, use our local folks, you know, to help give inputs or, but again, the list is sixteen and it appears two of those sixteen are in your area. So.
And I understand it's a list of sixteen, but how many circuits are, how many total circuits?
Sixteen circuits.
No, no, no. How many total circuits in the city of Laredo?
Oh, we have eighty in the city of Laredo.
And sixteen. And out of those sixteen, twenty-five percent of that eighty, that's twenty circuits. Twenty circuits you can't touch.
Right. And then I got the sixteen on the load shed and.
We're going to put the sixteen on the load shed, but you have the other ones that were you could work with.
Right. And they're in your district as well as every other district.
And I don't mind if we rotate because I'm a firm believer in fairness because I can tell you since Monday, more than my area has, has not had light. And I can tell you other areas that they haven't had a disturbance throughout the city and I'm not blaming them. It's just based on the circuits. I'm blaming, why wasn't it rolling? If you know it takes, if you know it, it once you have to go down one, you have to take two down so you can bring one up, then do it. It doesn't really matter. It's, it's a better feeling to at least have light for about three hours or six hours than not have all night at all for three days.
The conversation is basically the rollout, what, what caused not to have that rollout? And I think you all said it's, it was a question of you all had the flexibility, but yet there was no generation to, to.
Capacity.
To exercise.
It's based on the watts. For three watts, they have to produce four and a half watts, one point five more to pick up the rollout. That's what they said. So that's why I'm saying instead of dropping one, drop two so you could pick up an extra one.
Okay, what, yeah.
It's common math, but if you want to talk to them on what, a lot of people are going to have a hard time understanding of what you're talking about. Just put it in simple terms and give us a solution. Do a rollout.
Okay.
A rollout is possible, guys.
Councilmember Rodriguez, allow him to, to respond to that, that, that example that you mentioned. So you heard him. You know, what response would you have to Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, and, and he's right on with his math. I mean, and Olga alluded to that a while ago, that cold load pickup, and I appreciate that. But the quandary we're in, councilman, is we exhausted our list of sixteen. So do we then dip in to the other list with a sundry of critical load on it? And that's the struggle we've had, you know, our original plan didn't call for going into that list. We've been reviewing that list and so we've been adding to the list of sixteen. We've been taking away from the no touch list and, and moving over because we never thought. We've been taking away from the no-touch list and, and moving over because we never thought we had a process to, to look at those feeders. And, and I know there's elderly on every feeder we choose. But we're trying to look, you know, are there nursing homes on those? Are there other critical facilities? And, and it is a tough, it is a tough decision. Decisions on, on which feeders go. But that's the.
One that you say, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. And like you say, we're not playing God, but we're being fair. It's about being fair. And if you have six hours or eight hours on one side, you give it to the other side.
Yep.
And if you have, that's a great, great fair.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Fully distributed.
Yeah, councilor, let's talk about the distribution. Let me point that out. This is the numbers before we started doing restoration, which today, as Jeff alluded, we're right now in that around the twenty-two thousand. But if you look at the fixed numbers, the Santo Niño area at Longmont was around seventeen hundred customers on one circuit, twelve hundred on another, Anna Street, which is the west side of Laredo, fifty hundred and fifty-four heights, two thousand. Uh, Gate, Gateway, which is the east side of Laredo, nineteen hundred. So as we've mentioned, we believe there's, they are distributed throughout the city, north, south, central, east and west. And I'm reading the numbers, these were the numbers before.
My district falls on three out of those. Both the Santo Niño and the East District falls on District Two. I have three going out. It's not fair.
Okay, the point is well made. Yes, I think Councilmember Albert Torres and then I believe Ms. Pettis, do you have?
Thank you, mayor. Um, and I first want to obviously thank Tony because he's had a very good line of communication with us and trying to transfer questions. And I know he's in a very difficult position, oh, wants to be Director of External Affairs right now, trying to be in the middle of a government entity and your employer, but he's doing what he can and providing us answers. And I guess my question is, I've been doing and checking into numbers. And I think that what Councilmember Rodriguez is alluding to is kind of what my question that by what four, five zip code only has a four percent, four percent blackout percentage. According to yours that on your website, you had the other areas and seven eight zero four five, for those AP people that are on, that are not familiar with Laredo, that's your north part of town, your larger homes that are two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand square feet. And they are the bigger properties that are probably consuming more electricity than those further south. Yet they only have a four percent blackout in that zip code. And the question is, how was that determined? And ERCOT continues to, to mention, and I know Tony's done a fantastic job in trying to answer these questions for us. I want to hear from the people that are from the higher ups in explaining if ERCOT is now shifting the responsibility to the energy providers on these blackouts. How were these blackouts determined? And why do we see that very low number in North Laredo homes that in zip codes, seven which is your South Laredo at thirty-four percent, your Central Laredo at twenty-five percent, and your seven eight zero four zero and your seven eight zero four one, which is your west side at a twenty-four and twenty-two percent? Why do we see that inequity in this data? And those are the questions people want to know. If ERCOT is now shifting the responsibility and saying, hey, we simply demand from the providers to have blackouts. And we say, AP, and I think this is the way I'm explaining to my constituents, and correct me if wrong, AP, you have an overload on your grid, bring down ten percent of the load. They make the request and it's to our understanding, based on what Governor Abbott just said a couple of hours ago, that AP and the energy provider, and we brought the video here to play it, is based on the provider's decision. Is that accurate? Is that?
It's accurate in that we have control over which feeders are, are dropped off. And, and I can tell you, sir, zip codes didn't come into play when we make those decisions. We, we look at our substations and where they're located and we look at the amount of load on those substations and we spread that out. Now, those feeders go into different zip codes, as you just pointed out. Guarantee you, there was no intention of inequity if it appears that way around a zip code. But, but we're actually not looking at customers and not looking at location. We're looking at load, as Councilman Rodriguez was talking about watt. We're looking at megawatts. And where's goes to? There's some inequity in that or an appearance of inequity, you know, based on the way it all plays out in the end on a map. But load wide.
You know, Councilman Torres, if I may, on those percentages you mentioned, a discussion that we can have, of course, is also the percentage does not equate to the load. Of course, as you, as you just mentioned yourself, as you get into North Laredo, you have larger homes, but you also have greater load character, load profiles. Many of those homes, as we experienced, we went through Delmar, many of those homes have not one, but multiple air conditioning units. And the winter peak, because people tell me every day, how can we survive a hundred and ten degree weather with no problems? But yet here we have two or three days of freezing and all of a sudden we're in this, as we've mentioned before. Later. Of KW, a majority of the heating in Laredo and especially North Laredo, where you have, as you mentioned, bigger homes, bigger units, they have heating elements. Each of those can have fifteen to twenty KW of heating elements. You multiply those times thousands of homes, all of a sudden that small percentage you talked about, and I, you know, we can probably follow up with the number that, as far as data and watts, as Jeff said, but it likely has a big KW drop.
Thank you for, for the answer, Tony. Mr. Stasner, I think I'm pronouncing your, your last name.
Stasner.
I apologize. You know, it, it seems to me that the, the map of the entire state of Texas and the outages correlate with the data that we're seeing even here locally. You look at the state of Texas in its entirety, and I know that maybe you all are not the providers for the entire state. And the map that's laid out for us is blue indicating no outages and it starts getting yellow, orange, red and maroon. And the darker it gets, the higher number of outages they are. And we see that inequity in the entire state of Texas, up north, no outages. Then it starts coming down south and we start seeing the major, major outages south of Bear County, down to San Antonio, up to the valley and, and along the border. And it kind of, you know, correlates with the data, you know, whatever explanation we give that we see here locally on outages. And I understand what Mr. Otis is, is explaining, but you know, what, what really did not help in this situation is the fact that if ERCOT is saying AP has the, and I'm saying AP because you are a provider for a city. If, if the provider is the one that chooses who to turn off, then it gives, you know, that sense of asking for accountability of how and why this is occurring, the way it is happening. Right? And we understand everybody's frustrated, everybody's upset. I haven't had electricity for three days and I can teach and I don't have any right now. Uh, myself and several council members that are here with us today, and I think including the mayor. Uh, but we, we are wanting to be able to provide answers. And originally, the answer we heard was ERCOT is controlling the grid. And that's the information we've been putting out there to our constituents. And then now we hear, no, it's AP that controls the outage and, and, and what goes on and what goes off. We need to have a unified message here, Mr. Stasner. And we need to really think of all these people, you know, where it puts us in a very difficult position and situation, representing, you know, Central Laredo, where I'm starting to see more communities in my district with restored power. But at the same time, there's a lot of homes that are not properly insulated and properly equipped to have this kind of weather condition. Yet, you know, it's, it's disheartening to see that those houses that are properly insulated and prepared for this kind of, of weather, essentially compared to those others are the ones that are not experiencing the outage. I mean, my parents, I'll say this, you know, did not have an outage at all, no service interruption. They live in South Laredo and they just got service interruption today. And that's my next question. We're starting to see people with power restored, right, that didn't have power for three days. People had had power with no power. Um, is that a rotation, number one? Number two, those people that got power restored, are they expected to have an outage again? So that we can let them know and they can prepare. And those people that had power that lost it are the expectation, they expect to get it back? Is, is, is my question. And then the, the other question is, what will happen tonight? What will happen tomorrow with a decrease in temperature? Will we see a increased number of outages? Has ERCOT relayed any information to AP, asking you all to prepare to start reducing the overload on the grid? Is that something we're prepared for? Do we need to start telling our people that they need to prepare for outages if they've had electricity? What are we supposed to expect and what do we tell our people from here on is the question?
Yes, sir. Well, you had, you had a bunch of questions in there and, and I'd love to, for you to send me that website that you were talking about. Where you showed the north part of the state blue and it, it turned red as you got further south. Because AP Texas has only shed nine percent of the total load that's been shed across the state. You know, Encore and Center Point, Texas, New Mexico Power. It, it's all based, you know, on their, their native load. So that, that color ought to be relatively the same across the state. But anyway, I digress a little bit with that.
Well, no, hold on, Jeff, because I, I did see that map that Albert, they posted last night and I was, I mean, I copied and pasted because I was going to discuss it with you. Uh, just so you know, remember that we're talking about the ERCOT service area. There are a couple of other power pools that aren't associated with ERCOT. So for example, SPP, whatever does that serve as that, the western portion?
Yeah. And you have the western power grid in, in El Paso.
So, you know, those aren't part of the ERCOT system, Councilman Torres, just, just to point that out. Because I know you, you know, I, I remember that comment last night.
Let me get to his questions about, have we?
Yes.
We rolled six of those sixteen circuits that I mentioned earlier. Six of them we brought back on. And we internally have talked about, we need to do everything we can not to roll those back off. So we're, we're trying to tag them in our system, but I'm not going to stand here and promise you that we won't. Because if all of a sudden a whole lot more generation drops off the grid tonight or tomorrow, uh, we're going to have to do something. But I can tell you that it would, due to strong guidance, that we're going to make every effort to keep those back on. So some new ones probably went off today to replace those six. Because we have not brought enough, you know, the market, the generate, generators hadn't brought enough load back onto the grid to take, put somebody back on the grid without taking somebody off.
So were people taken off the grid to put people back on the grid today?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what rotating is. Yes, sir. We've had about.
And those people that were taken off the grid should expect to be without electricity for how many hours? And those people that got electricity should expect to have electricity for how long before we get them off the grid? Or you all get them off the grid again?
Man, you're asking a great question. And, and I don't have the answer to that, sir.
How can you not have the answer to it if you're controlling the on and off switch button?
Well, so if I just simply wanted to look at the eighty circuits total, regardless of who's on that circuit in the city of Laredo and take ten off one day and then the next day put them back on and take ten other ones back, I could give you some certainty. I could tell you, yep. But I can't, I don't have the flexibility to do that, to work with that whole group of, of feeders. And I really don't, you know, I know those people that are out are saying, man, turn my neighbor off, turn me back on. And, and I get that. But we've got to preserve a certain amount of the grid to keep the whole grid from going down. So.
Isn't that part of your twenty-five that they're not touching?
That aren't interrupted through this process.
I, I, has, has ERCOT, has ERCOT given you all any direction as to what will happen tonight with colder temperatures? As ERCOT said, what's going to happen tomorrow? Are we expecting to have ERCOT ask providers to overload on the grid again? Should we expect more people to have outages as temperatures continue to decline tonight and tomorrow?
And there will be a meeting with ERCOT this afternoon. So I encourage you, ERCOT has a website, ERCOT.com. I'm looking at it right now and I'm looking at what their forecast are. And the generation right now is up higher than it's been in a good while. So, so you can look at that and say, well, things look pretty good, things from where we are right now. It's not getting a whole lot better, but it's, it's going to hold its place. But I can also tell you, I've been sitting here in this position and been on calls internally at seven o'clock at night when things look good. And by the time we get off that call, we're getting notices from ERCOT to drop load. It, it, it's that fickle, sir. And I, it frustrates the heck out of me, to be all honest with you. Uh, but right now, the picture looks pretty good. And those that, that came back on, it looks like they'd stay, stay on. I'm sorry.
My final question, or briefly, and I'll wrap it up to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask what they want to ask, is, has ERCOT, and we continue to hear that apparently ERCOT is seeing that people up north in Texas are experiencing colder weather and that there may be a priority for those people to have power for heating purposes and stuff as compared to South Texas? That is obviously, I heard the word warmer and it's not, it's just less cold or not as cold as in the north parts of Texas. If that is the case, we continue to hear ERCOT might ask for a complete blackout in South Texas, only those essentials to be able to power the north part of Texas. Is that accurate? Is that something that wouldn't happen? Is that a rumor or is there any validity to it, is my question?
At this point in time, and Judith can correct me, she's heard something different. I mean, we've had much colder temperatures the last couple of days and we serve all the way to the panhandle of Texas. We were told, interrupt down south and leave the stuff up north alone. I mean, we've interrupted up north at the same rate as we have down south. Now, that's not to say that, that there could be regional requests, but we have not had any regional requests to this point. You know, historically, I think twenty fourteen, there was a regional request for the valley only because the issue was only in the valley. So we just dealt with it down there. So there is a history of some regional requests, but not during this, what I call the Valentine freeze. Uh, it's been statewide and there hasn't been any region-specific request. It's just AP dropped nine percent of your load and boom, we spread it out across all five of our districts from Brownsville to Childers, Texas.
When do you think it'll be the last time we hear, I don't know, with this situation with this ongoing, like you called it Valentine freeze? When will we start getting precise answers as far as timelines and dates? I think everyone, you know, all your customers are tired of hearing us say, AP does not know, ERCOT does not know. And we know mother nature doesn't give us, you know, much of a leeway or advance notice, right? Other than meteorology. But when can we stop hearing, I don't know, and start getting concrete answers to projections?
Hey, sir, Jeff, if I may, and councilmember, I certainly understand your frustration. I do. And I'm sorry, I hope I'm coming across okay, because I will tell you, I have been without power since this started as well. Right? So I'm having kind of connectivity issues listening to y'all as well, because my connectivity is questionable. But I will say that, um, you know, we are very sorry, but we, we can't give you certainty. You know, something that is very different from, I, I know the Delmar event from a couple of years was mentioned earlier. This is not a situation, there's an issue on our system, you know, with AP Texas. This is an issue that is driven by a lack of generation across the entire state of Texas. So I would say that I think what you're hearing is a rumor if they're saying, oh, they're going to say, you know, shut off all of South Texas and bring North Texas. That's, that's not correct. I have not heard anything like that. This is a statewide issue across the entire ERCOT, you know, system. And ERCOT does manage grid. They. And ERCOT does manage grid. They are responsible for keeping that balance between the transmission operators and the generation that is needed to serve the load across the entire ERCOT region. So, yes, they do direct the transmission operators like AEP when we have to um take action. And this is an extremely rare event. I mean, i- in twenty fourteen, there was something very local, but it was only in the Rio Grande Valley. The last time this happened was in twenty eleven. And I think it was thirty-five years before anything load shed was required before that. So I will say that this is an extremely rare, you know, situation that we're under. And I think the generators are are trying to do what they can. I mean, we keep hearing that there will be more generation coming online. And I think we're very hopeful that that is the case, because trust me, we want to restore power to our customers even more than you do. I think, I mean, it it is something that that it's our business. And we recognize that we provide a very essential service. And we do recognize that this is a very difficult time for many people. Um, but I can't tell you with certainty that there will be enough generation tomorrow morning for everyone to be restored again, because we're not getting that certainty.
I'm wrapping up my thought there. Um, so 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 two last things. One, um, y- y- y'all haven't um answered my question. Is AEP prepared for tonight and tomorrow?
Are are we prepared? Yes, sir.
Are we, is AEP prepared for colder temperatures? And if you are, are we supposed to expect more blackouts?
I would say our teams are prepared for whatever may ca- may come our way. We are hopeful that more generation comes on the system and we are allowed to put more of our load back on the system. If the generation facilities trip offline like they have the past couple of nights and ERCOT directs us to share more load, then we will be prepared to meet their their directive.
When you say sure.
I cannot tell you that we will not have more.
When you say sure more lo- more load, that means more blackouts to share the load with ERCOT.
That's correct, yes.
My 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 last follow-up question, because it's not often, we've got the higher-ups of AEP, honorers with their presence. But all the people are asking, my food has spoiled, um appliances have gone out because of the ongoing um uh blackouts, um is AEP going to offer some sort of is a question that a lot of people have.
You cut out there, council member. What was that question?
So um I I said, it's not often we have our higher-ups, maybe honors with their with their presence here. And there's a lot of people that have had hundreds of dollars of groceries spoiled into refrigerators. Um electronic devices from televisions to microwaves and other um items that they had hooked up to or connected gone bad because of the blackouts is um should, are the customers ex- uh are they supposed to expect some sort of relief? From AEP? Is that something that doesn't happen? Because this is an act of God and it's Mother Nature's doing? Or am I out of line in asking you all, and you all wouldn't be able to be the ones to answer that question for us?
Yeah, there's a good question. It's a fair question. Uh, yes, is there any uh planned relief for any damages caused by by these occurrences uh from AEP or was you'll have an answer and if you don't, uh, I guess.
Uh, this is, this is Julio Reyes, and and I can, I can hopefully answer your, your commissioner's question. You know, historically, you know, we've had these type of issues where we had major outages that last longer than expected. And you write, you you have damage, whether it be with damaged equipment or damaged, you know, groceries. And we have a a department that, you know, for employees um coordinating, in this case, Tony and Olga would coordinate uh with our ma- risk management group where you can file a a claim and they'll be reviewed accordingly. And that's how we do it historically, to tell you yes or no, uh, you know, we don't have that answer simply because this thing's not over yet. You know, I don't know even know what the governor's side is gonna do, because he he's aware of what's happening in the field. But that's kind of in a nutshell, there is that department that handles those. They don't fall under us, they fall under our corporate uh direction that's based out of Columbus, Ohio. But we can provide you that information. I know Tony and Olga have it there available for those as we move forward that want to file a claim can do so.
Thank you very much. Yeah, moving on.
Let me just clarify, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Uh, if I may, this is Olga Maldonado for the record. Um, where we have issues, where we can go and evaluate the situation. And we had some type of involvement in causing the uh impact to the customer. We do have, as uh Mr. Reyes mentioned, a process. But we also have in our tariff that anything that is an act of God, uh, to quote uh the commi- the councilman. Um, you know, on those, we do not reimburse. So I will leave it to the president of our company and Jeff Strassner. Uh, but from that standpoint, this is an issue that is affecting the whole state. It is not an issue that has been caused by AEP Texas. If we do have individual claims, we will certainly take a look at those and see if there's anything from our side that we perceive. We, you know, work with the customer to talk through that process. But overall, in terms of providing monetary relief across the board, uh, to me, this is uh speaks, our tariff speaks to that, and it would be classified under natural acts.
Okay.
And I will seat the floor to Judith or Jeff if they want to make another comment.
No, thank you, Olga. That is correct.
Okay, thank, yeah, we need to move on. I think before we take another, a second round of questioning or comments from council members, I would ask.
Mary, well, Rudy.
Yeah, we need to uh go to Ms. Vanessa Perez, and then we'll come to you, uh, council member Rodriguez. Uh, unless Mercutio Martinez, we haven't heard from him, nor Rudy Gonzalez, uh.
Oh, Mayor, no, Mayor, he was next.
Uh, yeah, who's who's next?
Rudy, we're, he was next.
Mayor Pro Temp is next, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Temp, Gonzalez, uh, go ahead, please. And then we'll come to Ms. Perez, I believe. And and then Mercutio Martinez, if he wishes to make any comments.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, if I lose uh, if I if I lose my my services, because I've been without internet and, you know, we haven't had any light for the last three and a half days as well, like, just like Mr. Rodriguez. Um, but I agree with everything that's been said uh from each of our colleagues up here. Uh, they said they pretty much answered all the questions that I that I've uh been waiting to ask, and and I'm glad they did. It's just, uh, you know, more than anything, we we did this uh for the people, so that they can know what what what's truly going on out there. One of the things that that's just very disappointing that um, you know, I think in the south, it was uh, we were actually, Albert, you had said thirty-four percent, but for a while, we were at forty-two percent for the first two and a half days, I guess. And then I guess it dropped to thirty-four percent. Some people got some power back and and the rest of us didn't. Um, it's just unfortunate for those who have infants, like we've discussed. Um, babies and and elderly and, you know, I mean, imagine all that food that's gonna waste, uh, extra money that they're gonna have to use now to to rebuy groceries and you know, the means is not that easy. And then, you know, we we got people going haywire at the gasoline station when the gasoline station, when the gas wasn't even an issue. Um, you know, it's just, it's it's getting chaotic out there. And you know, it's just unbelievable that that we can't come to to an agreement or and I understand what you what you guys are saying in AEP and uh Argo, but uh it's just, it's just not, it's just not not easy, just, you know. We want answers for the public and we want answers for our people, you know, one of, one of my areas that's been very affected has been uh uh, it was Tomas del Sur, uh, half of Tomas del Sur, San Cuatro Vientos. Uh, the LBJ area, um, you know, Los Angeles, we've had Century City, half of Century City hasn't been working for three and a half days. Independence Hills, Freedom, and it's just, you know, it's getting, it's getting out of hand and 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 we just need you know, we need to get something going for our people, you know, we just don't want them just to be left out there in the cold. And it's it's getting pretty hard, pretty difficult for a lot of them.
You know, and Councilman, this is Julio Reyes, you you're absolutely right. And, you know, I know Judith mentioned, our president mentioned that she has no lights. Uh, what she didn't tell you is that not only her, but myself and another, quite a number of the leadership team for AEP Texas have been out of lights for more than two days. So we're not exempt. So so we eh we fully understand what you're going through, you know, Councilman Torres Rodriguez, we understand. Unfortunately, you know, the way like Judith and and uh Jeb mentioned, and even Tony and Olga mentioned, you know, what's happening with with the the in the generation up with ERCOT. You know, we gotta buy by what they tell us, or we can lose entire system, not only in in A AEP Texas, but across the state. Uh, and we're gonna, then we're gonna continue. I mean, you know, Jeff's already committed, Jeff Strassner has already committed. We're gonna do everything we can. But at at the end of the day, you know, committing that, for us to commit to say, you're not gonna have an outage tonight, we we don't know. Uh, I I my lights were probably, I got them on, you know, today. I know they might go off again, because again, if ERCOT says, you know, sorry, we lost uh another generator or two generators. Uh, guess what? Yeah, we're going off again. And and until generation, the sun comes out, the wind blows. Hopefully, we get back where we get, and then we'll, you know, we'll be more than, you know, we'll be, you'll, we'll be calling you and and Tony and Olga will be calling, hey, we're gonna put you back on quickly. But at this point in time, you know, our, you know, not one hand, but two hands are tied as to what we want to do, because we it's so frustrating for us not being able to do what we do best. Um, and we're keeping our we we're hoping and praying that, uh, you know, again, the this coal front snap goes away and we can do what we do best, like I said, and get everybody back on.
Uh, this is Olga Maldonado for the record. Um, I just wanted to make one more comment, please, sir. Um, on a proactive side, uh, we are also, while we're in the midst of waiting for additional generation, our manager of distribution systems does have his people looking at the different circuits that are down, trying to see if there's any trees on the line. Do we have anything visually from our standpoint that we see? So at the point that we get to uh have additional generation, that we can re-energize the circuit, that we minimize the amount of mishaps that we might have. Uh, you know, it depending on how the weather is, if it's cold, we might have a couple of overloads on transformers. But to the extent that we can eyeball and see if there's anything from the trimming side, you know, not to say that we're gonna be a hundred percent effective, that we won't miss a tree limb somewhere or other, but we are trying to do our proactive best to try to prepare ourselves. So when we do have it, we minimize the amount of time that we have our customers up and in 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 power. Thank you.
Thank you. And more than anything, we 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 put this item up, a lot of us did because, you know, we we wanted answers for the public, wanted answers for our community, for respective districts and for, you know, the city of Laredo. Um, you know, that we're trying to do our best to to get answers from from you guys, uh, from AEP and from you guys and and just bring something back to them, because a lot of people are just lost and really don't know what's going on, you know. Um, you know, some might say, you know, it's the county, it's the city, you know, but we need to know where we need the people to know where this is coming from. That's that's more than anything that what we needed, is the answer as far as where this is coming from. But I appreciate your your feedback.
Thank you very much. I'm Airport Ten. Moving on to uh council member Vanessa Perez. Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, so I guess one of the things that we're struggling with is, uh, I guess the 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 lack of what appears to be a lack of compassion in this blackout, you know, it was supposed to be rolling, it was supposed to be, everybody's gonna be out for a little while, and then, you know, we're all gonna, I guess, share the the burden of of the blackout and and then some of our citizens ended up bearing the entire burden. And so um, if you knew that which sixteen circuits you were initially going to take offline, could you not have notified us in advance as to which exactly circuits you were planning to take offline? And that way, we could have prepared in advance, uh, so that those people in that area could have made arrangements instead of just hanging around. I know a lot of people were hopeful that, well, maybe it's just an hour, maybe it's just two hours, maybe it's just three hours. And so they didn't really make arrangements. And then, you know, two hours turned into two days. And so um, I think just from from a compassion standpoint and a consideration standpoint to the people is to let them know in advance that these are the areas that are gonna be out, and right now, we can't bring them back on. But it seemed like there was a lack of communication, a breakdown there as far as nobody knew which areas or when. And I think we're all still kind of in this state of, you know, could it happen to us? And um, we understand that you have to make these decisions on which circuits to take offline, but I think a lot of us are still here wondering uh, how you determined which circuits to take offline and and why we couldn't be notified in advance, at least you know, so we can make preparations. And then also, as far as preventive measures, like Ms. Maldonado mentioned, is you know, she's talking about tree line, tree lines that are touching power, the power lines. I mean, couldn't all of that have been done last week in preparation? We knew this was coming. And so I think, and and not just from this storm, but I I I know a lot of Laredoans can can vouch for this, but Laredo seems to have a lot of service disruptions, even throughout the time where the water, the power will kick off and kick back on. I mean, is this a maintenance issue? Uh, I know in District Seven, there's a lot of areas that have trees touching power lines, you know. I guess we're talking, Dr. Marta Martinez, Councilmember Martinez, a- asked in the beginning, um, you know, why are we having this again? And I don't think that question has been answered yet. And so I'm also wanting to second that is could we have done something else to prevent this? And so if we are not thinking forward and thinking preventive, then we're gonna, then we're gonna be anticipating this or other types of issues, service disruptions. Um, we're gonna be, you know, expecting that. And and I think that if we were to put a little bit of effort into prevention and then also communicating with the pe- with us properly, so we can be aware of what the plans are. Um, instead of saying it's gonna be a rolling blackout, and then it the, and then that, you know, that doesn't, there's like a distrust, you know, especially since it does look like South Laredo in South Texas is getting uh the brunt of one, lack of Covid vaccines from the state. And then now two, you know, we're the ones having to bear this heavy burden on this, on this weather. And so it's like, hey, we're, you know, we're Texans also, and we're feeling a little bit, um, um, I guess
Looks.
Not as prior, not as important. So um, those are my questions.
Yes, ma'am, and 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 all good questions. And and if I could take it in two parts, so as far as this event and getting notice, yes, we we had a list, we've had a list for for years for Laredo. We don't publicize that list, you know, to the community to say, hey, if something ever bad happens, you're gonna be the first feeder off. Um, but we got this call at one thirty in the morning, Monday morning. So there there would have been no opportunity to give notice to anybody. I kept my phone by the bed and it rolled me out of bed at one thirty, and the notice was to stop, start dropping load. The the uh the frustrating part, though, is to not to be able to communicate with you better afterwards, to give you some kind of clue as to how long this is gonna last. And 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 as the state, we gotta sit down and talk about how to prevent this going forward from a a lack of generation and and how to be able to handle this better. On a local front there, um, around maintenance of our system and so and to in the city of Laredo, you know, would it, would it have uh kept your lights from being disruptive? Do the lack of generation in this case? No, ma'am, it wouldn't. Um, but, you know, during a typical spring storm or or other activity that happens throughout the year, you know, the more maintenance that we do, the less likely there would be disruption. So so that aspect is within our control, within my control. Am I gonna be able to solve every potential problem in the city of Laredo? No, ma'am, I'm not. And I'm not gonna stand here in front of you and your constituents and and make that kind of promise. But I I am telling you that AEP Texas is committed to Laredo, we're committed to South Texas, we're committed to North Texas, because I've we've got customers in Abilene and San Angelo that feel like they're being singled out a- as well. And 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 so times, but but everybody's feeling this thing statewide. But I I do appreciate your comments and and we have had a lot of conversation around messaging and communications and stuff, and and there's always opportunities to do better than.
And did you, any, yeah, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor.
Back on the second round.
Um, everybody else got much more than me, Mayor. I got like, I got like one question, Mayor.
Yeah, but you, you've had, you've had your time, sorry. Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Mark Martinez.
I think the, a, and, uh, Councilmember Vanessa Perez hit the nail on the head. Uh, our constituents are okay knowing that we're all gonna bear the burden. And I know that the Governor Abbott is, uh, asked the utilities company to do the roll blackouts. That way, eh, uh, the shorted outage duration is, is, is short. And so the, the thing is, if we had that notice, and people would know that they're gonna be off for a little while, and then they're gonna come back on, such as the case in San Antonio and in, in College Station, et cetera. Uh, they're having rollouts, and they're okay. They, they don't mind, and they're all conserving energy, trying to, but they know that the electricity's gonna come on in a little while, and we're gonna heat up the house, and, and we're, and my freezer's not gonna mess up or anything. And, and, and I think that, uh, if we can, um, do something like that, so that we all share the burden, uh, then, then we're gonna be fine. So, um, look at your grids, uh, study them again, reevaluate, uh, and, and we all don't mind pitching in, but it becomes, if people start to, to really question when they're the only ones getting affected, and they're in it, uh, like Councilmember Perez said, you know, it's two hours, now it's two days. And, and my neighbor right across the street has power, and I don't. What's going on?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, I believe, um, I'm next, and then we'll go to the second round, if there's any additional questions.
Mayor, if I may.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember, uh, Alyssa Sierra, go ahead, please.
I can go after if the.
No, 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 go ahead. No, no, yeah, I would like to hear your comments as well, or.
Thank you. I, I would just like, I, I share a similar sentiment as my colleagues. And I, and I also just am curious as to why the city hasn't been consulted when making these decisions about, uh, about which areas to turn off and to turn on. Um, you know, is it possible that the city managers can be included and, eh, in, and to have their input?
Yeah, and, uh, for, for the record, this is Julio Reyes, and, and I know Jeff will jump in. Um, historically, and, and you may know this, uh, Olga and Tony, you know, we sit down, um, every other year and identify those critical accounts, uh, within the city. They're served by the city, uh, of Laredo as well as others. And we sit down with your staff and, and review the entire list to say, which are your priority one? And we call them P ones, and then priority two, priority three, like your fire stations, et cetera, hospitals, and to make sure that we know what's out there that you don't want us to turn on. Uh, and we work first with the city, and we also work with the county. And like I said, your staff's involved, where we sit down at the table. And, and I, and I can commit to you right now, that's a discussion we've already had internally, we're gonna update it again. We're gonna get with City of Laredo as well as other cities, and update that list to make sure, at the end of the day, we know which are the critical circuits, and you know as well which are the circuits that we're looking at, that we're not gonna be able to, Jeff mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there are certain ones we, they're critical that we're not gonna turn off simply because they provide, again, service to nursing homes, your sewer lists, your water plants, et cetera. But to your point, can we do it now? No, because we're in the emergency situation. But we do commit, and we'll sit down with you and your staff and identify, uh, those critical accounts that you mentioned, to make sure that, you know, that you're involved in decision-making of which circuits you feel are the most critical for you.
But I do believe that, I mean, especially in these, these types of emergen, emergency decisions, that our staff should be more involved. I mean, they have the expertise, um, and know exactly which areas need power. And especially, I mean, we've had, we, I, I, I represent the West End, and, and just like, uh, my colleagues, we've, we've gone without life and power and water for four days almost.
Yes. And I, and I fully understand, it's just that, you know, like, again, discussions and presentations, ERCOT, when they, you know, we, we, we get those calls unexpectedly, and we'll move forward, because ERCOT says, I don't need two days for you to take, take off that load. We need it now. And, and that's why we gotta do what we do with this, the circuits, like Jeff mentioned, have been identified already, and that's what we use for now. But, and that's something, you know, for your recommendation, that's something for us to consider later on, if that's something we wanna do, that, um, where we partner together as to what we need to do forward differently.
Yes, uh, Councilperson Sierra, uh, good afternoon. I haven't had the opportunity to meet you. I think we've been on some text message, messages, but, yeah, as a matter of fact, as far as identifying accounts, you're exactly correct, and it's about communication. Uh, one of the accounts that we weren't, have not been notified, 'cause we do ask, as, as Mr. Reyes mentioned, uh, on some type of regular basis, work together to identify accounts, but we did not have the warming center. Uh, our company has a master list, and when I received it four days ago, I immediately responded, where's Laredo? This was way before, uh, so not pointing fingers at anybody, it's all, it's, it's all of our responsibility. But, you know, not only have we added the warming center, and working with the EMC coordinator over the past couple of days, we've added the health center. Why? Because now in this unique, particular situation, it includes, uh, the COVID vaccines. So, um, it, it, the, the line of communication continues, needs to be continued, be a key element for us to move forward.
Just any other questions, uh, Councilmember Sierra?
No, I, 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 I believe that's it, but I do, I do think that especially, we don't, we don't really have time to, to, to wait. We should get, you know, make sure that, that our, our management is, has as much input as possible.
Yeah, my question is to follow up basically to your thoughts as well, uh, Councilmember Sierra. Yeah, if I understand it correctly, based on the, the preliminary statements made by the, the respective AEP representatives, you know, you mentioned that you have a no-touch list, because if, if you touch that, that endangers or places of risk, the entire grid, uh, for the state of Texas. So, uh, what calculation, uh, and this is, this goes to the question that, uh, the Councilmembers Sierra made, uh, personally. You know, primarily to see who qualifies for that no-touch list. And, and this is very something to that critical list that you all mentioned, too. You're saying, you know, certain circuits we can't touch because of, of the danger that, that poses to the grid. Okay, we understand that, but personally speaking, I think you, we need input, you all need input from management. And then the critical list, obviously, you definitely need, uh, input from management, too, because this is for your, your priority circuits or, or accounts, you know, hospitals, uh, uh, so on, you know, uh, the fire station, so on. Uh, so, so then the next tier that you all mentioned was the, uh, load shedding. Uh, and, and that's, you know, what goes into that, too? Uh, this is where I think you also need some input. It's now seeing what occurred, then hopefully for the next go-around, hopefully there won't be an next go-around, but the, the odds are, with mother nature, you just don't know. So, uh, I think there's lessons learned here, so you need to, to consult with us on the no-touch. You know, why this account and not this account? And, uh, and then the critical list, for sure, and then the actual load shedding as well. Uh, so, uh, so there's, you know, there's gotta be some equity there. Uh, and then what I also hear is that, is that although you all have the flexibility because of the, the lack of generation, the fact that you didn't have the energy, you know, took away some of that flexibility, or, or most of it, that's my understanding. Uh, uh, yes, it's up to you, but, but it got so dire that it, it kind of posed you up somewhat to, to, to a, a major extent. Although you do have some flexibility, and this is for now, uh, council, I hear council is saying, within that small flexibility that you have, uh, please, uh, uh, do equity, if, if, you know, the people that, that haven't had it, you know, maybe they need it now. And this is, it went to the questions that Councilmember Torres posed to you all. Uh, and, and then there's no certainty as to, as to how those accounts are gonna be treated, uh, because you yourselves don't know what the, uh, the generation of, of energy's gonna be tonight, or, or lack of. Uh, and that, and that throws, throws it back to you all and then to us. But to the extent, I think the message here is to, to the, whatever flexibility and control that you all have locally, uh, please be more equitable, especially the areas that haven't had it. You know, we, we're asking you to please, uh, grant those as well. Full understanding that obviously there are some priority accounts that you can't touch, being the, the critical accounts. Accounts, uh, to, so you won't touch, you know, that, that portion of, of the energy that you all need to keep. Uh, so anyway, just some thoughts here, uh, and then I know there's, there's some additional questions. Uh, I, I personally appreciate you all taking the time, obviously, we, we needed to hear from you all. Uh, and, uh, and you can see the, the frustration that all of us council members included, uh, uh, and, and we've been wanting to have this, this emergency meeting. And I know I personally had been asking for one, and Dr. Martha Martinez as well, uh, but, uh, but weather didn't permit that until today, uh, it, it kind of opened up, and city council was, was available. And I'm glad the, uh, the respective council members brought this item as well, and, but I was gonna bring it up as well, because it's, it's really, you know, important to us, uh. Uh, so I know Dr. Martha Martinez, you.
Well, that's real good feedback, uh, Mr. Mayor. I don't mean to cut you off, and certainly we learned a lot out of this. And, uh, we do need to sit down with you and, and review those lists for going forward.
Couple things, uh, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, number one, you know, when we talk about critical accounts, these events are very infrequent, right? Um, and whenever they happen, we have this uproar, and there, there's this collaborative effort that starts, um, where, you know, AEP starts to work closely with the city of Laredo, and that may last two, three years, four years, and then all of a sudden it goes up. This is what happens. Um, and then what ends up occurring is then there's another catastrophic event, nobody knew what was going on, because the critical, um, the critical. And so then we have, you know, the new council comes in and yells and screams and talks about how we need to have better collaborative effort with AEP. Uh, this is not the first time this happened, Jim, okay, just, just so we know, and we're clear. We have a committee that, uh, Councilmember Torres. And, and that is our, our, um, Utilities Committee. Um, Councilmember Torres, I think you created, you, you re-established this maybe a few months ago. Uh, and, and so I, I think this is something that we need to look at, um, along with a whole host of. Is, um, if, if this is a, I didn't look at the agenda per se, and it was an emergency, but is there a, uh, ability to have action on the, on this item? Um, this is for legal?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Martinez.
Okay, um, so my, my first motion is going to be, uh, to set up, uh, regularly scheduled meeting between AEP, uh, as well as our Utilities Commission. Um, that would be annually to, uh, along with management, establish the critical areas of our city to make sure that this doesn't happen again, and that we have a very clear understanding of where our grid system lies, which are the, uh, the shed loading areas, which are the critical infrastructure areas, so that the city of Laredo has a much better map and an understanding of what's gonna happen going forward. That's my first motion.
Second, second.
There's a motion, the second is presented, uh, discussion. None heard, all those in favor say aye. Please, we can see you, or. Any against, sound out, or raise your hands? None against? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Number two, so.
Uh, excuse me, uh, for the record, this is Julio Reyes. Thank you, you know, for doing what you're doing, but for the record, and, and to be legal, you, you said AEP. Uh, AEP's our corporate headquarters. For us to be legal, it's gotta be AEP Texas, just a correction.
AEP Texas, forgive me, okay.
Thank you, thank you, customer, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
With that amendment, and, and the second, it would, would also amend as well, uh.
I can do it.
Thank you, uh, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
Number two, you know, you guys talked about earlier saying that you don't want to play God, right? That, that you don't wanna be up here sitting, you know, sitting up here and saying, who gets electricity and who doesn't get electricity? We know that an ice storm hit Laredo and all of Texas, and we know that we decreased, um, the generation of power. Um, but truly, those that selected which, um, circuits were turned off, and in some way did play God, was AEP Texas, right? And even though you guys had this load management system that you had in place, ultimately, you were the ones that decided to not do the rolling blackouts that were necessary. So in dealing with your corporate, when you're talking about this is considered an act of God, I believe that it's not necessarily an act of God, because it was an act, a very, very educated decision that you guys made in order, uh, in order to protect your circuit, to not allow a rolling blackout, okay? So by doing that, I think that some people, some people still should be eligible, um, for some sort of relief, because it did, if it would have been across the board, and the whole system would have been down, and that's the way it would have been, I understand. But the fact that certain select people, and those circuits were selected by AEP Texas, it doesn't really look like an act of God anymore. Now it looks like an act of, 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 of the company itself to try to protect the circuit, which I understand. I understand the global, uh, the global, uh, uh, issue is that we had a winter storm. But instead of selecting a rolling blackout, that's not what was done. And so because of that, people did lose some equipment, people did lose some foods. And I think that, um, you guys should try your hardest to help relieve some of the burden, especially during this time of the pandemic, and especially during the time when a lot of people don't have any money. We should do everything we can to try to help those, those, uh, those ratepayers that you guys service. And so all I'm saying is, I, I think this council, uh, feels much better about where we are with our relationship with AEP. If you were to take those ideas to heart, because people lost a lot. And people lost, um, their ability to stay in their own home, um, eh, eh, their, their food, their perishables, a lot of things. And so you guys need to take that into consideration when you're saying, when you start saying that this is just an act of God. This was a managed, critical infrastructure decision made by AEP Texas, okay? Because of an act of God. But nonetheless, we could have shared the load. We could have shared the load.
Okay, so do, do you have a motion, sir?
So the motion, the motion is to act, uh, to, to, um, send a letter, uh, a-asking AEP Texas to consider relief for those that had perishables that were, um, uh, that were damaged because of the lack of rolling blackouts, and send a letter to AEP.
Obviously, we're, we're asking for, uh, remuneration or credit or some, some sort of.
Yes, sir.
Action, okay. Uh, this, go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to add to that comment, just to say that if, if, again, going back to the letting us know in advance, had these people living in these areas that these circuits were, and I know you said, I know, Mr. Strachan, you said that you found out at one thirty in the morning that this was gonna be executed or, or, um, the plan. But however, you did, did say that you've had lists for years on which circuits would be the ones to go down in the event that there was a need to conserve. And so we were not informed which areas you had in your list that were gonna be the first ones to go down. Had we been provided that list in advance, our residents would have known, if we have to turn off power, these are the areas that are gonna be affected, then they would have planned ahead to not purchase hundreds of dollars worth of groceries. Um, maybe they could have made arrangements ahead of time to stay somewhere else. And so there were economic, um, um, impacts from the decision not to let us know in advance which areas were gonna be the first ones impacted. And a rolling blackout doesn't necessarily have to be every forty-five minutes to an hour, 'cause that was the original intention, was to roll them out every forty-five minutes. But even an eight-hour rollout, or a six-hour rollout, or a four-hour rollout, or a twelve-hour rollout is better than a two-day blackout. And, and it's, I mean, it's easy to get a place to stay for one night, maybe two nights, if you're asking somebody to stay in your home, but asking somebody to take in a family or to take in people for three, four, five nights, then that's, 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 that's a little, that's much. So that's, it's, it's a lot to ask. So, um, maybe you all were not able to do the forty-five minute rotations, but I'm pretty sure that you could have figured out a way to do it in longer stretches of time that didn't involve taking sixteen circuits off the grid indefinitely.
Yeah, Mayor, may, may I finish my points?
Hold on, I think, uh, anyone else before we get to, to the third round?
I'm sorry, sir, I hadn't I hadn't yielded, sir. I just let her go because she started, Mayor. I still had two other points.
I don't see anyone else wanting to speak. So go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, on the portion of rolling blackouts, this question is for Mr. Strasser. Sir, you said that you understood that there's critical infrastructure that we, the critical means that we need. There's 80 accounts, I think is what you said, 30 are critical or some somewhere around there, right? You said are critical, which leaves us about 50 total circuits that that we're working with. Am I saying the math correctly so far?
That's a rough number, yes, sir. Twenty-five percent of the 40, so 20 are are kind of set aside and then we work with the other 60.
Okay, and and we said that this there's conversion where we have three watts to 4.5 cranking watts, if you will, of cold start, right? And so because of it, we decided that. The question that, when we asked that question specifically, you said that your load management wouldn't allow because you couldn't get past that. My question for you is, and and you said that this happened because there was a lack of generation, the lack of generations with what basically handcuffed your ability to act. So my question for you is the following. Could you have, or is it possible, maybe I'm just, this is a simplistic point of view here, okay? But could we have selected 20 circuits and rotated those out? In other words, yes, more people would have been in the rotation, but the load management would have been less. Hence, we would have been able to have a true rotation, whether it's 12 hours. In other words, you chose 16 and you chose to keep it at 16 because you were trying to affect the least amount of people. By having 18 or 20 circuits involved, if you will, in this rotation, that would have allowed you to have that cold cranking time, or sorry, that that time to build up those cold. Sort of heat or some sort of electricity during the during these four days. My question for you is, is am I saying that too simplistically? Or is that something that you can now implement going forward for the next two days?
Well. Quality of those feeders. So so we do need to relook at how long can our list be realistically? We never in our wildest dreams have had any experience of having to drop this much load in the past. So as the mayor indicated a while ago, there's going to be a lot of lessons learned out of here. And the longer the list, the greater flexibility you have.
Yeah, just specifically, I I know we all need lessons and there's a lot of stuff we have to learn. I get it. But we have people that are cold right now. And so my question for you is specifically. To get some people back online so we can actually start rotating. That's a that's an honest, yes or no?
Yes, sir. We have, we have been having those conversations and we're trying to expand that list as we as we speak. And that's one reason we were able to bring at least six circuits back on in Laredo.
And you took six down, correct? Because I know Delmar area went down, right? So 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 in other words, we've had people in 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 my area, I represent the Delmar area, sir. I represent plantation, wind field, and we've had, I've had constituents now for three days as well without power, without in in a lot of areas without or some areas without water as well. Because the pipe, the pipe's frozen. But we did see that some other areas turned on today, but a larger portion of my area went down. That's okay. We we all need to, we all need to be part of it. The question is, will there be a rolling black? I'm asking directly, if we include more circuits into this into this rotation, will you be able to turn on people that have been without power for the last three days? Because I think Laredoans understand that fair is fair and and nobody wants to be without power or electricity. But my goodness, people suffering, I've had 90-year-old ladies crying to me about how cold they are. So the yes or no, if we were to increase the amount of grids involved, could we get a better rotation?
Yes.
Okay, is that something that you guys are looking into right now?
Yes.
Do you need any support from us or is that something that's going to occur starting today?
Oh, it's already started. We're already reviewing and we've been reviewing those, that list with our local management team there in Laredo.
Okay, so 16, 16, but it's still 16 circuits according to what you're telling.
That was our original list. We're trying to expand that list.
Okay, so what have you expanded it to, sir?
I'd I'd have to go. I got a call here at seven o'clock with my management team to see where we're at on that.
Okay, is there any way that you could maybe touch back with the city manager's office, let's say tomorrow, to tell us where we are in this process?
Yeah, we can work through Tony and Olga to to get you an update on that.
Thank you. And and I, you know, what you're hearing from us is nothing more than I'm sure the frustration that you're hearing throughout the rest of Texas, sir. And I know you guys are in a in a tough position and I thank you for being here. But ultimately, we do think that more of us should have shared in this burden. And I know my my wife and I, our hearts go out to other people, we've had electricity. But I've had five, five colleagues that haven't, you know, and so it's just, it's 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 not fair. We should have shared in that burden as well, sir.
Yes, sir. But I do want everybody to understand, I mean, if, heaven forbid, you know, the call comes that we got to drop even more load and that that shrinks our options, you know, rotating.
What I'm saying is it should change, it should shrink your options from new areas. It should not change your, it should not shrink your options from areas that have been suffering for the last 70.
We covered those areas. I think we need to move on. Yeah, councilmember Rodriguez. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, there's still a motion on the floor for the letter to be sent.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct. Yeah, so the motion is to, yeah. Could you repeat that motion? Because I know there was a lot of conversation between when it was made and and now.
The motion was to send a letter to AEP Texas regarding the lack. Of reimbursement or something.
Or credit of some sort, yes. Okay, yes, a couple of the question, others in favor say aye. Sound out hands, any opposed, please raise your hand or sound out. Not heard, motion unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to, yeah, I think councilmember Rodriguez said.
Yes, I still have some questions, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Real quick, I'd like to make a motion that we ask management and our legal team to go after the information of what goes into the criteria of what are the untouchables for the 20% or 25% of the AEP houses, what's the mid-range? And what are the categories for those 16 that are taken off? That'll be my motion for our legal team to go after that.
Second. Yeah, second, just a motion, the second discussion. But I keep in mind that those categories are very important, but but in essence, personally speaking, I think management needs to have input on all the categories. You know, the no touch, you know, why this account and not that account, the critical list.
We made that motion already, Mayor, right? We said we're going to take it to the to the committee as well as management so that they'll have input into that.
No, no, this is for what is currently right now, what led to these decisions? Who made that decision to cut these areas only because for the past three years? Now this time, it's mainly surrounded the same areas that get to be cut off. That that is the motion.
So you're saying now.
I want to know, yeah, we want to know what were the decisions made or what was the criteria made for those 25% that are the untouchables? The other 60% that gets that the middle ground with with the reclaiming and those 16.
And that shedding of load, you know, what went into that?
What went into the criteria and who picked and who chose it?
Okay, three categories, because we need to know personally, I think, if you don't mind expanding your motion, you know, what went into the decision-making for those three criteria? Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, and.
It's already seconded by Mayor Proti.
Mayor Proti have seconded. Discussion, any further discussion, just. No voting, sir. Yeah, call for the question, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, sound out or or show hands. And I don't hear any. So motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any other business with the AEP?
Yes, I I'd like to make a motion that we officially request in writing from AEP a map and listing by possible of the outages that we currently have. And if possible, let them to us as soon as possible so that we, the city, know exactly where is the need of those people that do not have any sort of warming capabilities, do not have food. We are trying to do what we can or end in our end as council members on a blanket type of, I guess, service for our constituents by having water drives, food drives, trying to distribute. But I want to make sure that we address the homes that are in need. And we need information from AEP in order to do that. And we need their help and cooperation in trying to get that. So if they can provide us with maybe a map that shows what areas by sectors or however it is that they break it up into so that we could have some sort of guidance to provide that service to our constituents, we need that as soon as possible. We need information with that.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Would account addresses be a better help to us? Is that is that too?
We could have it in in some sort of a map and then have our staff just kind of divided by by districts. Or we could have it by whatever it is that can help us be able to take to those households and need whatever little we can. Then we have that information made available to us and as it changes, then we get an updated list or whatever map, whatever it is that they provide to us. But we we need that as soon as possible and I'm sure they have that data available. But we need to officially request that from them.
Councilman, this is Tony, I believe you're looking, is there a request something along lines of, as we've showed, the circuits that are outlined in certain streets, like we're working with the All in the Streetlight Project, we're identifying the streets with streetlights now. But you want is the circuits that are impacted within the community that will help you identify those neighborhoods. Does that sound like the request?
Yes, that that I guess that would help us and guiding us in addressing the people that need the help. And as that changes, that we get an updated document as well.
Do you want more specific information, addresses, councilmember? Who who hasn't had electricity yet? Then it could be people that can't communicate. Anyway, just a thought.
Correct. This is Olga Maldonado for the record. Circuits don't follow a very prescriptive block by block. So we can certainly talk to work with the city on areas that are edge to get individual addresses. We'll have to see how we can pull that off the system. But we can certainly start by working with general areas that are out.
Right, and and I think that Mr. Otis is the one that has a better idea of what we're requesting. He just mentioned that if he could give us neighborhoods, the Santo Niño, Central Laredo, the Heights area, Jefferson. I mean, I think he knows more or less what we're talking about. So if we could get it to us, it'd be great.
Okay. Yes, yes, I do, customer. Please understand that when we went over those lists of substations that we mentioned is how the customers are per substation, that does not necessarily equate to the specific area. It's a really good, it gives you a really good idea. But nonetheless, you know, we'll work with you.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor, sign this, Julio Reyes, for the record. Just an FYI, I appreciate Councilman Rodriguez and Perez motions of wanting information. And we'll most be able to provide whatever we can, but please understand there there's some PI information, personal information we cannot provide. So we, so please understand, we may not give you everything you may need.
You know, one day, if you could just provide us with a map and mark areas in red that do not have power, that's all we want. I don't want account numbers.
We can do that. We can do that. I just want to make sure, feel understand, there's some information we may not be able to provide. And the other, I know, again, Councilman Rodriguez, you mentioned you wanted, you know, more detail with Mr. Perez. And we can do that as well. Just please understand, it it there might be a slight delay or whatever, but we're going to make every effort to give it to you. Both places, well as Olga and Tony, but I commit to you, we're going to do everything we can to expedite it.
And if it could be expedited, y'all have energy to restore. We've got people to answer to that do not have food, do not have water, do not have heating elements. We also have a responsibility on our end.
No, I fully understand. I just want to make sure that, you know, we all understand.
And we're not in the energy business. You all are in the energy business, so I understand. It's, you know, to sustain your business. We're in the business of public service.
No, I understand. I fully, fully respect that. It's just that, you know, for the information that you're requesting, it falls on some some folks that we got them pretty much tied up 24/7, but like I'm, we're committed to help you in every way we can.
Appreciate your commitment. Thank you.
Yes, I believe I know what you're looking for.
Yes, and Miss Maldonado, go ahead. And we have a question by by councilmember. Just go ahead, man.
I would say this is Judith, I think we can start with the outage map on our website.
That's what I was, I was gonna say, I believe I can help the council with his interest, yes. To to as a starting point, yes, we can, we can order that pronto, councilmen, council members and council people.
And I'm concerned I got two along those lines, too, is that people have called me and 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 I know the fire people, the fire department has been going, especially those 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 areas where the elderly, they can't communicate, they're just, you know, hunkered down. You know, they've been knocking on those doors and asking if they need help. That's really the the most vulnerable, you know, people within the neighborhoods that that may not know what's going on now. So anyway, that's my concern. Yes, Ruben Gutierrez, go ahead, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. People from AEP, Ms. Maldonado or Mr. Strasser, just a question. If we're considering these blackouts, rolling blackouts now, how long of a period of time are we expecting these blackouts to to last? Just so we have an answer for our constituents when they do call and ask, once their their home does lose power. And also, can we have a map explaining or telling us when the next power outage will be or where it will be, where it will be taking place? So we can maybe prepare certain people, certain areas, you know, you said 16 circuits are out right now. We might be moving to 20 circuits now. So if that does take place, would you be able to give us a timeframe when the blackouts, how long they'd be lasting and where the next one would be taking place?
You know, I don't know that I can give you a timeframe, sir. It's going to be dependent on the generation issues that we're we're facing. You know, I said early in this council meeting that we're committed, those that we're bringing back on, we're committed to do our best not to take them off. The bigger list that I can get, the more I could rotate. So let me work on that.
We we have spoken before about going to 20 circuits. So if we move to 20 circuits, you know, would you be able to give us maybe a timeframe in four, five, six, seven, eight hours at a time? Just to be able to tell people, you know, in eight hours, you'll be back up again.
Yes, sir. The problem is even going to 20 circuits, you know, I still got 10 off right now that that.
Yes.
I I don't have an option with. And so I got to grow that list to try to bring them on before I can commit. And until I know how big I can get the list, you know, there may be some of these circuits that that I can't get to until the generation comes up. I can't commit to you that, okay, they only got another eight hours and and I'm going to have an option, you know, to bring them up. I I wish I could give you that.
Okay.
But I can't, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate the discussion. It was very helpful.
Mayor, if I can just make a, I want to follow up with a comment for council, councilperson, that is, and councilman, Martha Martinez. They mentioned the Delmar substation and what happened three or four years ago. I guess when we sat down with you back and we had that instant overload, that was infrastructure related. So we have expanded that successfully. That substation, we did not have an infrastructure problem. And it goes back to what we said time and time again throughout this meeting. And it's been the lack of generation. But the expansion that we worked with you on in Delmar, that substation was not impacted as far as overload like it was four years ago. And if Jeff has something different to say, I would definitely welcome it, but I did want to clarify that point.
But I can tell you. Miss. But we weren't ready for a generation to go down.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to clarify that, that, yes, the expansion did help us. Council, council members.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Management, Robert Riazul. Okay, thank you for those comments. Management, uh, Robert, uh, Riazul, uh, Mia.
There.
There, for the border. There, there is a, a motion on the table.
Oh, that's right. Okay, sorry. Uh, and, uh, and the motion being the map.
Yes, it was the outage map in order to uh better service the citizens that are in this uh outage area.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Uh, call for the question, all those in favor, say aye. Sure, uh, or sign down. Uh, and you opposed, show your hands, or sign down, have not hearing anyone and not seeing any signs going up. Uh, I take it it's a unanimous vote, some motion carries?
Thank you. I have another motion, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
There, I, I think, and now that we have the people of A P here, maybe they can um add substance to my request. Um, I've, I've been around different areas of town. We, we see these um big billboards around the city. I was even mentioning this to count, she was mentioning it to me, Councilor Cigarroa, um, in a conversation yesterday as we were trying to see what, what would help us here today. Um, and we see several businesses, um, we see billboards, we see maybe what be considered unessential things. Um, powering probably our electrical grids. And we don't want to step and, and cross that line of, of enterprise and, and the division of, of the private sector and, and the public sector. But would it help, um, uh, there's a question for A P. If we were to aggressively ask these people to maybe shut off these um high consuming electrical um billboards, um, I passed by text out last night on my way home. And Texas had all their exterior lights on. You know, you have different businesses and I, and I get it, you know, it's, it's for security purposes. But would that help um uh not overcharge the grid? Or is that something that would be um not useful in trying to address the situation right now?
No, sir. We have, it would help. We have repeatedly been asking people to conserve as much as they can.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
So to have that
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we
I was just
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we instruct management to aggressively, even if it's a knock and talk, um, make phone calls, call these people and um ask them for their cooperation, not demand, but ask them to cooperate with us for the next couple of days. The same way we were asking um big uh entities to shut off their irrigation systems to help us with water pressure. We also need them to help us by even schools, the college, they're empty. Um, all those people that are not using um the floodlights, that are not using anything that's considered essential right now for them to shut them off and help us in um removing this um overcharge on the grids. So to aggressively communicate, and when we say aggressively, I don't mean come out on the TV because that's obviously hasn't worked. We need people on the phones, calling um executive directors, calling presidents of boards, calling CEOs to ask them to cooperate with us, um, all the way from state entities to local entities, school districts, whatever it takes, even the private sector, and asking them for their cooperation. And that's my motion.
I'll, I'll second that, Mayor.
Go ahead, uh, council member Martinez, Mark Martinez.
In previous council, we've made motions to not only reduce staff by half, but to reduce that half by another half. And so we're already at a thin line. And for them to be making phone calls, I try to keep trace, traces of the pandemic and, and contact tracing, et cetera. But then to start getting out of other areas that, that we have them busy at, short staff, to also be making phone calls to all these businesses. I, I think it's, we're asking, uh, and we're all trying to be extra mile. Uh, I know I've made phone calls by own. And if, if, I'd like to hear from management, just what it is.
Well, be, be, before we have management answer, um, there, we're not asking for us to bring staff in. Um, this is something management should be able to take care of. Um, we're talking about these big businesses, these big locations, management has a rolodex or address book under cell phone. He can pick up the phone and just ask these people to not a thousand phone calls. It's maybe 50 calls at the most, but they need to happen.
But I, yeah, we need to hear from management. I think it's a fair question. Uh, is, uh, Mr. Eats?
Yeah, I, I think this is an all inclusive, all hands on board type issue. There's no reason the Chamber of Commerce should not be on the phones pounding away at their members. There's no reason why LED, uh, LED, uh, LED C, uh, former L D F is not doing the same. We'll do what we can, but we have redistributed uh people right now that, that are running uh not only the current pandemic, but we're also running this weather event. And we've reshuffled a lot of our resources to a 24 hour operation. In addition to what we have with facilities that are shut down too at our Sains Auto Arena. So we will um do as much as we can, but we are running on very limited resources. Team members who are affected as well, that they don't have power themselves, they don't have water themselves. And so we, we are stuck in, in that. What I would say is that we can definitely make as many calls as we can, but I will challenge everyone to go ahead and, and do just that. The Chamber Commerce, LED C, those are our business, uh, community members. Take up the challenge, be a part of the solution and not wait for the city to come in and save everybody. Everybody needs to save everybody. It needs to be an all, all uh hands on deck type approach. And because, again, for the city to save everyone, and that, that is an almost an on, 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 you know, an achievement that we will not be able to, 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 to make. Orders as well. And so I, I will take on the task. We will take on the task, but know that we are having to prioritize and triage all of these different right now. Get you know, three days now uh going, but we'll, we'll make every effort. I mean, we'll promise you that.
Mr. Eats, you have my commitment, uh, Mr. Eats, to come in tomorrow morning and to start making those phone calls. But I will not burden the staff any further because they're on a shoestring right, oper- in operations right now.
Council members, council members and mayor, I've been able to participate with you all, starting the weekend in preparation and through all the media and business partner briefings that we've had. And uh, Mayor will tell you, we've pushed conservation at every single one. Uh, we try, we do share our information um on social media with just about every council member. You all do a tremendous job. I send you all our updates. Uh, that's, yes, it's only social media, but I, I see the responses that you'll get, Mayor, everybody that I see on the screen. I'll continue to send all the information focusing on conservation to help promote the, you know, the, the need that, the importance of having conservation in places we get through this event. But thank you all.
And then can I point out just one thing too, so that you can, you can know what the city is doing on our part as well. We've had clear direction. When we sit in a city hall right now, that's probably about 50 degrees because we refuse to turn on the heater in the entire day. When we walked in this morning, we were only running on, on, on lights. But we've also taken, taken things offline so that we can unburden our off generator so that we wouldn't, that's a huge right now, just making a, a lot of stress on that. We, again, we will, and directive has gone out citywide from our part and everything that we can control for sure, that everyone was sent off to lessen the footprint of our electricity usage everywhere that we're at. Obviously with the ones who have power to begin with, because we have a huge majority of, or a huge number of our buildings, we're still without power ourselves. And so wherever we are at, we will lessen our footprint. Wherever we can speak to conservation, we will definitely keep going.
Thank you very much. Uh, council member Vanessa Perez, I know you've been waiting. Go ahead, then, please.
I was just gonna ask, Mr., thank you, Mayor, for Mr. Mr. Strasser. Were, what were they exactly? Were they to, that Laredo was going to have to, um, you know, bear some of this burden? Or if we as a community were to all um practice these conservation efforts, does that mean that more of our community could event, we could eventually maybe get to the point where 100% of our community has power? Or regardless of what we do, our community is still gonna be without power because ERCOT directed you to take offline so much power? Or how, what are your orders? That, that's what I wanted to kind of
Yes, ma'am. So when we get an order from ERCOT, it's just to drop X number of megawatts. Like the last one we got was to drop 47 megawatts. And so from there, we look, we're broken up into five different districts and we look at, at our load between those districts. And then within the district, like Laredo District, the city of Laredo is the biggest load um load center, you know, within that district. So we spread that request to drop load out based on the load in the current area. So, you know, Laredo, we encourage everybody to, to conserve. But the reality is, if, if you conserve, as long as you're using one kilowatt, you know, you're gonna get some share of that uh that load shed, you know, when that call comes out. Um, so encourage the conservation and not just Laredo. That conserves that Laredo won't get any load shed.
And, and I was gonna say Jeff mentioned a megawatt and just you know
you know, their, their load on the system, then, then, then it's possible that all the circuits in Laredo could come back up just to get to that point? Or is, or is every, or is there gonna be inevitably certain people that are just gonna be completely shut off? If we all were to, you know, push for conservation, call businesses, take these things, I think we'd wanna make sure that you know, that we're, all of our efforts are gonna be for, for, for our communities. So that's
Yes, ma'am. I, I can't guarantee you that. Some, some number of circuits that are out. And so we're gonna try to bring them all up as equitable as possible. I know we've had a lot of conversations about equity in your own town. Um, again, I highly encourage everybody to conserve, but I'm not gonna give you the false sense that if you're our number one conservative town, that you'll never have any load shed. Because we, we do have to go, you know, where the load is. And, and as you guys know, you are in a growing community. And there's a lot of load here. And so when we get that call, there is gonna be some load dropped in your community.
Call for the question on the floor. Uh, could you remind us again, uh?
Yes, Mayor. Have management aggressively ask businesses, school districts, college, universities, et cetera, that to turn off lights and, and, and I guess power down to uh conserve some energy for the grid.
Okay, call for the question, all those in favor, say aye. And you opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, opposed one, Mark Martinez, uh, the rest would be in favor. Thank you.
Dr. Marte still on, your councilman, uh, Gutierrez?
Yeah, Gutierrez is, he voted in favor. And Dr. Marte, are you still on?
Councilman Torres?
Yes, Councilmember Marte's here. Hold on, he's coming. Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just one, one upon that being council member, Marcoio Martinez, thank you. Any other matter on the A P situation? And if not, thank you, uh, ladies and gentlemen from A P for spending some time for us and in, in trying to clarify things as, as, as best you can with the uh, the uh control that you all may have. Uh, we appreciate that very much. And, and we look forward to, to, you know, the follow ups that, based on the motions that we made. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, just, if I may, Mayor, just as a disclaimer, uh, our president, Judith, uh, was having connection issues. So she was coming on and off. That's probably why you didn't see her come on as much as she wanted to. But I want to make sure everybody's aware that she kept calling on and off and unfortunately wasn't able to add more information. But I'm hoping you got the necessary information that we provided. And again, I applaud you and, and your council for supporting the conservation efforts. I think you're the first city in that we know of that's doing this. And it, we've been looking internally, looking for every opportunity. How can we communicate as much to, to detail to all the communities as to conserve? Because that helps the overall process. But again, you're taking, you, you're, you're straining new ground. So again, that was what Councilman Rodriguez or Councilman Perez, thank you for making that motion. Uh, it will be there to help you in any way as we move forward. Thank you so much.
So thank you all for y'alls participation. I think this
Thank, thank you as well. Just one more thing, uh, as our vice president said, he is correct, the right was uh, again, is the leader in this. As you all know, we are very close to starting the largest LED conversion project in our company, and that is here in Laredo. And that's all to our company. They're committed to the conservation. Uh, this is one more, one more avenue, one more step. Uh, and we look forward to, to working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think there's one last comment here by Julio Martinez, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, if, if it's possible, I know you all are private uh, company, publicly traded, I guess. But um, to provide maybe the top 10, top 20 consumption areas, uh, maybe we can tackle when we're making these phone calls. Um, number one, um, I say, I see Tony smiling over there. Um, and, and maybe we, that way we can approach them and say, hey, can you all help us in conserving energy here? Uh, so that, that was the question.
Yeah, so encourage the school districts, don't come back until the lights come on. That'd be the biggest help.
It'd be the school districts, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, good suggestion. Uh, moving on, I believe, uh, yes, yes, again, thank you and yes, go ahead, man, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for having us and giving us an opportunity to visit with you on this issue. I'm sorry about my connectivity issues, but I just, I, I want to assure all of you that as we continue to get opportunities from ERCOT to bring some of the load back on, that we are very focused on those um, the customers who have been out the longest to provide relief to them. So I, I want you to have that assurance from us and, and that is our commitment to you. And we'll continue to, to work through this. So thank you very much for the, for the time.
Mayor, be, be, before we let A P go, I've got one question regarding the motion we just passed.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I've got, um, Dr. Ricardo Solis telling me that he's watching the meetings. We, we spoke to them and go out and asking for their cooperation along with, had already made calls L I S D with Board President Pito Garcia, and they were also doing their part there. We've been doing this. I know Councilor Cigarroa, when we spoke, she was also doing her part. So we've been working on this, but we just want to ensure that the city manager, through his leadership and connections, um, is able to reach out to Chamber of Commerce, like you mentioned, getting creative and sending something out to business, asking them, please reduce your usage. But um, Dr. Solis is asking me, parking lots of to A P to ask them to shut them off if they don't need them. They don't have any vehicles parked there. He says, we can't control those because A P's controlling or, or manages those for us. How can they reach you all to ensure that we um get them turned off if they don't need them on?
Well, that, that is gonna be a difficult task on our part. We, it would basically require us to go out to each light and turn them off individually. Certainly, if you have an area of, of specific concern, let, let Tony know and, and my team will, will look at that and work with him.
Yeah, to the point of uh, what Councilman Torres just said, I did get a phone call uh, la- last night, as a matter of fact, from a constituent saying, what's uh, with L C, they, they've got all the lights on. And so I did reach out to Dr. Solis and he said, but our campuses, uh, the power grid is off. We have our comp, uh, both our campuses off. But what he, what that constituent was looking at was all of the traffic lights that were on in the parking lot area. That would be controlled by you all. Yet the campus was off.
Okay. So the points been made and, and hopefully, uh, AP can follow up on that with, with LC. Yeah, thank you for that.
And just, just one comment. Again, thank you, uh, Councilman Torres for making the motion to conserve it. Yeah, like I said, you're setting the presidents and we thank you so much. We'll do everything on our side to partner with you. Thank you so much again.
Thank you again. Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen from AP. We'll, uh, we'll continue visiting with you as, as matters progress. Uh, moving on.
Thank you.
Council. You're welcome. Uh, moving on, council, uh, uh, yeah, you know, the business and I, and obviously the water issue is a big issue as well. So management, could you report to us and see what the status is?
Thank you, mayor. So in, it's, it's a good segue because, uh, having to do with the, um. Natural disaster we're occurring right now and the weather event which caused, uh, power outages, we are now suffering on the water side and have been. Uh, since the beginning of this episode. Very immediately when this happened, uh, we had many of our systems go down, uh, one, uh, because of the weather conditions, obviously freezing and it froze. Parts of our equipment, obviously that, that, that is out there and exposed to these temperatures. Uh, but the other pieces as well has to do directly with electricity. And so, um. At this point, what we're seeing as well as, as an example, Jefferson, um, water plant. A power had been fluctuating in and out, in and out. We had to take offline ourselves, uh, to ensure that it stabilized. And so we did that. Um, El Pico, uh, because of power issues as well, we brought offline as well. We've been running on generators. Seeing about especially on our heights area with the line booster, uh, line tank. Our booster out there is, is on a generator much. We have six other lift stations that push water through our systems on generators as well. Without having the adequate power to push these, uh, it drops a, a lot of our service and it lowers or lessens the amount of pressure. And ability to provide, uh, the basic service of water to our constituents. We began, uh, quickly, uh, with about forty three thousand customers at the beginning when. Uh, we started with the outages, with the power outages and the, uh. Freeze that we had which caused some damage to transmitters. That, that all, you know, started with the. Issue on, uh, off us as well. A quick example, our, our own, uh, utilities administration building where we actually run all operations administratively from our utilities department. Um, without power. And so even, even that was without power, you know, where we actually power the, the water system, the wastewater systems. And so. Uh, it's an unfortunate crossing of events, uh, that's led us here. So we started with forty three thousand accounts that were out. We brought it down to about twenty seven thousand. Uh, yesterday and right now as of at least three PM, we probably have a different number, but at least three PM, we're a little over four thousand accounts that are being affected right now. With no water. There's low, uh, pressure, uh, in, again, in that heights area that we described and I can pull up a map and, and show. And share, uh, what exactly I'm, I'm talking about when, when I talk about these areas too. And so if I can, let me. Um, I need the host to allow me to share these whoever's on. Um, and so as I, I'll continue to describe whenever that gets, um, cleared. What that does to us right now is that it proposes two different issues. One, uh, an immediate low water pressure event that's happening along.
Proper start interrupt. Uh, you need, you need to allow you to share the mayor stepped out for a bit.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I really, I really do need that to happen.
Do you have anybody else that, that, that can?
No, it, let me, let me tell our, our staff here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I've, I've asked the staff to allow me to go ahead and do that. Well, identifying a map right now as I'm quickly able to share the map, uh, to show this, but we've got two issues going on with low pressure and then no service in, in very select. Uh, locations of our community, unfortunately. Uh, we, here we go. So if you can see in the red, which is identified, really, if you look at Loop Twenty east. Of Loop Twenty off three fifty nine area, which includes all of this, uh, immediately affected area in, in district two. Have that no, uh, water, uh, sustainable water, uh, to our customers right now and the low pro, low pressure system. It being in that more central, uh, heights area, uh, area that you see in yellow, that's quickly building up as, as we get. You know, some relief and building up the tanks, uh, back, we're able to provide that greater, um, pressurized system for that to be resolved. And we believe that that low, low pressure issue will become, uh, pretty, pretty quickly resolved, we hope, uh, by the end of tonight that we can go ahead and solve that. Our bigger, long, more, long-term concern is going to be where we're trying to address this no wa, no, uh, water or, or the ability to. Uh, fill our tanks quickly enough to beat the demand and if you needed area in the three fifty nine area, as you can tell. And so our crews have been working since, you know, Monday, since we had these issues and outages and obviously because of. Uh, infrastructure that you've seen have the same, uh, area had problems with a, a boil water notice, as you remember, I'm sure. Uh, a year, two years ago, this is the affected area that's had some infrastructure issues, uh, that we've been trying to now address. But those aren't quick, uh, fixes. Those aren't things that we can quickly go ahead and just flip the switch and change. We are finally able to. Uh, put money into the systems and as we continue to do that, we hope to get out of, uh, the situation where this. Same exact area of affected parties continues to suffer from no, uh, water at this point. Moving forward with, uh, with the system, we, as we work through this and I can, I can have our utilities director jump in here and get into the greater mechanics of. How, uh, and, and how quickly we think we can be out of that, um, area so that we can provide the water systems. And maybe I should probably. In fact, even do that. So before I move any further down the road, maybe, uh, Mr. Arturo Garcia, our. Utility, uh, department director can jump in there and kind of just describe what's going on in this three, this no, uh, water area. And how quickly we think we can bring it back. You can jump in, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Good evening, mayor, council members. For the record, Arturo Garcia Jr., the director of utilities. The area shown in red, uh, that's experiencing no water and also low pressures. Uh, so the low pressure causes the, uh, pressure readings there are at zero. Uh, two PSI. So those we're experiencing today. The area in yellow, some of those pressures are above twenty, twenty-five, uh, but they're not the normal operating pressures that people are used to. Uh, so, but those are improving as we gain, uh, water in the elevated tanks. Those areas will become, will begin to improve. The situation happening is that we're having continuous water breaks. Like currently just today, we had, um. Sixteen water breaks, twelve, we've already taken care of, four pending, and that's what we're tackling. Uh, and those are the main lines.
Are there those water breaks, Mr. Garcia?
Where were located? Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Rodriguez, go ahead.
The last one that we just had was on, uh. Three fifty nine and Ranch Road. It's, it's the most recent one that I had. The others I don't have here ready. Available handy, but, uh, they're, they're throughout the town.
Let me. Mr. Garcia, let me go at it real quick and straight to the point. I feel that my, uh, residents of district two need answers, uh. They don't need a PowerPoint, uh, they don't need anything. They just need the truth of what's going on and, uh, how do we address this situation? I know you're referring you to the city, you're coming in, uh, but now you are tasked with the burden of, uh, fixing, uh, the situation. Where it has been going on for the past, uh, for the past years, uh, ever since, uh, I have been here. Even my predecessors have gone through this. So every year, this is the area that automatically goes down. Why is that? Is that situation? Uh, going on? We need to build a plan so we could sustain it. We need to do something where if you know that it's going to go down, whether. It was a grass fire that the tent goes down, if it's a storm that's coming in or this, uh. Century freeze that we're conning it, or I don't know what's going on. But, uh, how do we get portable water? Do our people down there? One. And, uh, are we going to have to issue a water boil notice? Uh, at this point, we must tell our constituents today and today, if, if we are going to issue one. So they could be prepared and say, you know what, are we going to issue it in thirty minutes to an hour or tomorrow morning? So they can prepare for what needs to be done on their end. So, because they have elderly, they have children. Uh, the questions go on and on, but we'll start at those two.
Yes, as far as improving the, the area, uh, the reason is we do have a single line feeding these areas and those lines are also. Uh, large lines that volume is not used. And what happens is the demand in the center of town eats up most of that water. But to improve this area, we would need to improve, uh, make loops systems to improve the flow into the area. Have more than one source of water feeding into this area. That, that's one plan that, that could work. Uh, it will take time. As far as the boil water notice. Yes, I, I would recommend that we do add one because of the situation that's happening with zero pressure. Uh, it's happening because of the changes in the pressure in the, in the zone because of the demand that's happening in the cities, the leaks, the breaks. It affects that area because it's the far reach of the system.
Okay, and it's a water boil notice. Going to be issued for this area or you feel that we need it for the entire city?
Right now, it's for this area in red right now because the other areas are doing okay, but it could change tomorrow based on a, a break, uh, because like I said.
Well, uh, wait, Mr. Garcia, uh, let me just refer to, uh. City manager in this, city manager, Mr. Eads, what do you think about this, uh, water boil, uh, water boil notice, sir?
Yeah, no, thank you, councilmembers, uh, both of you for, for jumping in there with this. I, we, I definitely would say, let's. Let's do this in, in utmost precaution. Uh, we, we, you know, at this point, what we're saying, look. Again, we, we're actually telling people to boil water before they have water, if, if you really think about. So.
Before they have electricity.
Right, yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, understood. Uh, and, 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 um, you know, to make a, a point in this is to say that's how far before, you know, when we're saying. When you receive water and we hope it to be tonight, we're just saying that when you, when the tap opens, just boil it, please. I mean, just be, be safe about it. The pressures obviously drop because of not having water go through it. I gotta say right now, I just, I, the governor just announced as well. There's three hundred and thirty-two water systems in a hundred and ten counties that have issued two hundred and seventy-six different boil water notice for seven million customers in the state of Texas. We, we are doing this in anticipation and, and with the utmost precaution for our community and only in saying there is nothing in there that we have found. That any bacteria that's been, uh, shown to grow, anything like that. What we're, all we're saying is. Out of an abundance of caution, we would rather go ahead and issue a whole water notice. So when we do have water into the system, and I hope to God it's. Uh, as soon as possible, uh, that people just boil it before, uh, go ahead and, and do that. So I would highly recommend we issue that. I told staff. Um, about an hour ago, an hour and a half ago, before we started the meeting, that I would recommend that. And over an abundance of cautions for our citizens at this point. And now we can do our own through an active measure, obviously, and, and instituting that. But obviously we wanted to have a conversation with the city council. We had already started going down the road to, to do this. And, and in preparation, but we wanted to make sure that we spoke with the council, let you know what we're, uh, considering. Especially the affected areas. There would be nothing that would have to have happen right now with the constituents there. Because they are not receiving water. What this will just do is. When you do receive it, boil it until further notice, until we can, uh, rest assured that, that you're going to have safe drinking water afterwards. We also have some things that we're going to do for water distribution. I think council member twelve.
Yeah, and when it comes down to water distribution, I was going to say, do we actually need a motion or? Uh, well, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and use our PIO to go out and send the, send a flyer that we're going to be out there at eleven AM tomorrow. Distributing water for three fifty nine area and up till further nor, uh, further notice. Uh, we have to be day by day or every other day. Uh, the city of Laredo will be out there issuing water till this situation gets fixed. That is my motion.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Again.
Um, any more conversation?
Yep, council, just real quick. So we'll work with, uh, the council member, uh, council member Rodriguez on this especially, but. Uh, we'll be doing the water distribution as, as we talked about a little bit, bottled water, but also we'll be using the water trucks so that people can go and fill. The tanks as, as necessary, but we'll work you on that to make sure we get in the right places for the.
That's part of the PIO flyer so they could inform the public of what are the means of, uh, distribution that we're going to use.
Mayor, pro temp, just quickly.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Um, I will you to you, Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Eads, this, um, water boil notice, when will it be issued, sir? Just, just the actual time? Is it starting effective immediately?
As soon as we can, uh, type up in the, the format that TCQ needs, it would become effective as soon as that happens. And it'll probably be, be by the end of, uh, today, we, we would issue that now to. Again, with the expectation, to be honest, we were gone, we could look at this and TCQ has allowed us to look at this tomorrow to see if we actually needed to do it. Uh. But we are already, uh, saying, let's just do it out of the abundance caution. So we'll be working on it tonight and hopefully. Uh, by hopefully the ten o'clock broadcast, we can already broadcast out and let people know that that's going to be, uh, the standing order moving forward.
And, and this is going to be a citywide or region-specific?
No, sir. I'm sorry, uh, councilmember, uh, it's only this affected area that we're talking about here because the pressures are above the minimum requirements, even though it's low pressure. Uh, in that yellow, uh, it is above the threshold and we, we don't have concerns at least for now with, with what we know. Right now, it's only for this portion that we're talking about, uh, right now.
Okay, and we will have tankers out there supplying water?
And water distributions. We're working with the council members as well so that we can make sure that we get out to the residents. Um, as long as we need to be out there, we're going, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and make that happen.
Now, um, uh, Mr. Mr. Eads. I know it's not necessarily our responsibility completely, but do we not, um, also? These lines, don't they connect to other sources? Um, don't they connect to, um, county sources that we had a, an, an understanding with them or we were providing some sort of? Water to those areas as well? Is, is, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, uh, our water line connects to the colonial projects on the three fifty nine and we'll be reaching out as well to the counties. Who also lend a helping hand. I know, uh. City manager Robert Eads already reached out to, uh, county judge and they had offered a three tanker for the water supply. So there is an ongoing, uh, working relationship and, uh, and operations as well for this endeavor. And, and again, and I thank council for sticking, uh, sticking up for this one. It is a really, it's not a district problem. It's a humanitarian issue. And it's a whole Laredo an issue. When it comes down to this one, every single year, I bet you, you guys still remember this map where this comes up. And it shouldn't be a problem that we're having in twenty twenty-one. I hope believe by next year, we all hands on deck and we find a solution, a real solution. For this problem because every year, uh, every year, this, this thing happens at three fifty nine, no matter if. If five an hour, five miles per hour wind comes by, uh, guess what? Three fifty nine always runs out of, uh, water. So we need to start addressing the situations ever since, uh, yesterday. So where are they behind? So we need to start acting. Our residents really don't need it, uh, and the residents of the city of Laredo, they, they don't need to go through these type of mishaps, uh, every single day.
And, and one more time, because I, I didn't get a clear, maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but. What was the main reason why this area was yet again affected? Was it the cold temperatures? Was it a, uh? Was it a storage tank? Or what, what was it that resulted in this specific area once again being a problem? Because we've seen this before.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, um, councilmember, the, the reason this area, it's, it's a, it's a long finger area of our system. And most of the flows are concentrated in the center of town and by the, the demand is taken up in the center and before it reaches that area. We have issues with getting the demand into that tank and to the booster. But with the breaks that occurred and the freezing that occurred, that caused water to not get into that area. And that dropped our levels in the Las Boncas, uh, elevated storage. It also affected the three fifty nine booster.
But so as those pressures drop. Post, um, chlorinators, um, we wouldn't have this exact issue?
That was for the coronation. This is the, the water flow. What happened is with the breaks that happened closer into town, that affected the flow getting into these areas that are boosted from the booster stations.
So there could have been basically, uh, with the broken pipes, bacteria could have gotten into the pipes from those, from those breaks. Is that what you're saying?
Potentially that, that does happen, but these breaks were. Potentially, that that does happen, but these breaks were were breaks that did not affect the areas in town, but as they come out in here, the pressure's dropping, the level's dropping, the potential exists for
What level, level of what, level of water?
Let me put it this way, it's the PSI of whatever's going in, uh, whatever's going through the pipes. As the line breaks, you don't get more PSI, so that's pressure inside the vacuum of uh, the piping system, the water flowing through it. So it doesn't get all the way to the outskirts where 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 the edge.
What they're telling us is that there was, there was breaks further into town that resulted in this, but I, but I thought that, I I I thought that um, that we had the tanks already set up with post-chlorination, so that this was kind of an independent type system already. Um, in other words, water would come in to to these tanks and stored elevated tanks, and then from there, it would give this whole area, and that that was the whole reason we were setting up that system, um, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Neil, isn't that the case, and isn't that what we were working on, like to, so that this wouldn't happen again? And you're saying that fractures down uh, upstream of this now resulted in this downstream decrease in pressure? What I'm saying is it should, it should have led to a decrease in pressure to get to the storage tank, but but then not a decrease in pressure once it was in the storage tank.
If I may, Dr. Martha Martinez, it's, yeah, there was no water. It's it's a question of volume of water, water didn't reach that area. Uh, it and and the pressures went down, the volume of water went down, so there was no water to to coordinate. Uh, and then whatever little water remained in the pipeline was subject to uh, to losing coordination, you know, there was no no movement there. Uh, so that's, that's a risk, that's the way I I understand it, uh, and Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
Mayor, if I can, so just to be clear, what we're talking about the issue right now is pressure, uh, not chlorination, and so what what we've seen is is a drop in in the required number PSI, which is twenty, which is not there, which triggers that automatic uh, you know, flag to come up in and and the requirement, if at a certain amount of time you are without the required pressure. That'll trigger that, but this is not a coronation issue that we're talking about at this point.
So it's based on on PSI as as council member is saying, it's simple, it's not
It's a matter of, it it's a matter of have we found the pipe, or have we found the problem for the low PSI at this point?
Yes, the 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 current break that occurred in that area right now is the three fifty-nine ranch road, that's affecting that area right now.
So how much time are we looking at so we could get it fixed, we could get it up and running?
They're working on it tonight, uh, I can bring you, um, we should, we should hopefully have it done tonight, we we should have it completed, fixed.
Okay. And and I understand what's going on, but that's boring, because we're going into another twenty-degree weather. So we're hoping that we still have to come in with the with very low pressure, gradually pick it up. So if we open the valve full force, it's gonna burst a whole lot of pipes out there. So we don't want that situation, and we we're gonna do it, let's do it right. And we explain to the people, we need to put out a media outlet out there, so that people can understand what's going on. And in the case of a uh, drop in the bucket every minute, won't freeze your pipes. Then we put a media outlet explaining to how do we fix, or how do we help in the situation where this doesn't become a burden for current moment, because by the looks of it, we're going into deep Saturday or Sunday, potentially with the storm coming up. Without light, and hopefully, I mean, we had to just fix this issue of uh, the water.
Yes, uh, Mr. Uh, uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Proten, for for uh, presiding, uh, when I was after a break. Uh, yes, Mr. Eads?
Yeah, no, and I just, uh, what the council member was saying too, is is that we're trying to beat the the storage tank elevations and growing that capacity, so that we can have those required pressures and everything else happening while we have elevated usage, and so one key thing that you all described or talked about a lot with was power and conservation. Ha- uh, conservation of water resources is key also, that is, that is statewide, but it it's local too, so um, please refrain from using, you know, un unnecessary water, obviously, all irrigation systems for the most part should be off. Swimming pools, all of those things, gotta go, we've been talking about that, and we need to continue to to say those things.
Mr. Managers, I'm glad you're saying that, because some of the city facilities still have their sprinklers on. And so, and and I was getting calls about that, and so I that should have, that should have been taken care of, we should have handled that three days ago, I I called, we we also had some lights that were on in different facilities. Um, we gotta practice what we preach, we must practice what we preach. Uh, and so, you know, that that needs to be taken care of, I know you guys did it already, you handled it, but uh, I mean, we we need to be on top of those things as well, I I know that I had the same thing in 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 my clinic as well, um, so, thank you.
Okay, any, yeah, any other discussion, if not, there's a a question on the floor? And 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 I'm calling for the question, y'all listen, papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sound off, show hands? It appears that everyone's uh, in favor of this, uh, so motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, any other matter uh, with the water situation, management?
One last thing, mayor, so I I do see the draft already being proposed by uh, our legal health and utilities department already, so I anticipate that we'll probably have this out. You know, within the hour, so, uh, obviously, we'll we'll institute that as quickly as possible, but it does not, it will not change anybody uh, on the ground who is suffering from, in this area, from not having water. Uh, all we're saying is by, you know, by the chance you do get water, just boil it, that's all we're saying at this point.
Uh, we And I think the messaging needs to be very clear, Mr. Manager. Certain section, certain parameters, and the fact that all of San Antonio uh, just went through this, and Austin, and we need to have this clear message, because you know, we just went through something similar, and and this is something we couldn't have done, but we need to have a very clear message, so the pu- public understands um, why we're doing this, it's in, out of an abundance of caution, not because there's a potential uh, like problem, so.
Also, uh, I'd like to urge our constituents, if you see water coming out of the ground, especially on the streets area, please let us know. Uh, I know that uh, around the heights, uh, these pipes are seventy-five years old, and uh, because of this freeze. We are, I'm starting to see around the neighborhood, I've been driving the neighborhoods, and the water's starting to gush out, so, please, can, for all those out there, our our constituents, to please call it in.
Also, too, a jump point, uh, once we get a breather, and I know we've been, uh, management has been pulled every which way, and staff, of course, uh, uh, you know, I would like to bring, and and hopefully you all concur, uh, you know, where's where's the status of our master plan, your water master plan for the entire city?
We just brought it back two weeks ago, mayor.
No, no, yeah, but no, from the standpoint of new infrastructure, you know, we did pass some bonds that cover certain areas. Personally, I, yeah, I wouldn't wanna see, you know, this three fifty-nine taken care of, uh, the high cherry, you know, the the old infrastructure replaced, uh.
Has an update on that, mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry?
Mr. Me, I think has his hand up, he has a quick update on that.
Okay, no, yeah, good, if if we can, if the agenda allows for it, and I think it should, because I think it was raised by a council member Rodriguez, uh, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Riazumia, City Manager's office. Mayor, part of those thing is, what we have is the lion tank is the heart of the, is the heart. So if the tanks goes down, that tanks pumps water to South Laredo. Uh, because we have only one line, so part of this bigger bond package, we are lion tank has been rebuilt, that's about twelve point five million dollar investment, it's already under construction. We are, Arturo already were, went out for a request for proposal, we will build a dedicated line from Jefferson plant all the way to South Laredo. So we can have a separate system. Now, everything goes to lion, so if lion tanks goes down, guess what, the whole South Laredo goes down, we don't want to have that. So those are under works, but it will, it will be a lot of inconvenience, we're looking at probably Corpus Christi, one of the street, gonna be dug out and put a major, major line. And so those are the project you will see mayor under construction, some of them, lion is already on the ground. But the water line for the end of this year, because it's designed. Uh, thanks to council for those supporting of the water rate. And also, we are looking at purchasing uh, land. We are negotiating next to sports complex, that will be the two additional five million gallon tank, and that will be the future booster station. That is, that project is also funded, so as soon as we acquire the land, we'll start designing those, those are the projects. And so that should, I mean, as the bond package, if you look at mayor, if you remember from the from of the hundred and ten million dollar, pretty much, half of them will be invested in South Laredo water system, because it was it was neglected, I'm sorry to say, it was neglected.
Okay, uh, yeah, before we go to to additional questions, so so uh, this bond package that we passed, uh, Ria uh, will cover, will remedy the the matters that have have now come before this council?
That's what we did it, mayor.
Some, mayor, some of them, but we we will propose another bond package next year. Whatever money we have, this will cover the major transmission line, and the lion tank is already funded. Uh, but any additional projects like the future booster station, we'll we'll, in next year, we'll sell another bond package.
Okay. We have the funding mechanism already.
Okay, so so, yeah, yeah, this doesn't mean raising uh, uh, user fees, correct, and I think there's enough there in the financing.
Yes, sir, none none of that will actually happen, mayor, i- if it is, if at all, until we get feedback, right now, they're working through the uh, the water master plan and the wastewater master plan, they're getting public input, and they're looking at a a lot of different sources as well. Uh, I know that the feedback got kind of really um, really bad over the last several days. Um, and so, we're we're taking everything we're hearing, uh, and and so, just so you know, um, the funding mechanism already exists. Uh, it's just piecemealing thi- this this whole package that we need to were neglected for a long time, downtown was neglected for a long time. Um, and we were just living off of, you know, new development, and so we needed to do something um, to make sure that we could restore services for the foreseeable future for all of Orela, because we all deserve to have those services, and so that's already been established, but you know, there may be something that happens, you know, five years from now. Um, but but right now, um, that's why we took that bold step, and and thank you, mayor, again, for supporting.
Yes, sir, thank you, yes, uh, council member, I think, Perez and then Rodriguez, did you have a question or comment, Ms. Perez, no?
No, I didn't.
Thank you, yes, the council member Rodriguez?
I would like to call for the question, and I have another one, I have another motion right after me.
Okay, call for the question, all those in favors say aye? Bring your answer sound out, uh, uh, any opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries unanimously, and that's the all council members here present. Thank you, uh, so motion carries unanimously, thank you, yes, your next motion, please?
And and real quick, this other motion is to direct management to instruct or to go out for RFPs or RFQs. Uh, it it's a motion to go out for services for, uh, to help out our utilities. Uh, at this time, uh, when we have water line breaks, and in case of these types of emergencies, we see him through thunderstorms, or we see him right now through the freeze that's coming up. Our our workers are overwhelmed, if we could get a subcontractor that will be on a yearly lease, whatever management and legal feel that's deemed that's necessary, so they don't have to wait for us to act upon it, but they could go ahead and directly uh, management can say, you know what, we have this subcontractor, call them in, so they can start helping alleviate the pipe breaks throughout the whole city. Uh, that motion, we need to be proactive in that sense, because right now, it it's three fifty-nine area. Uh, maybe in the future, it might be another area, and we can cover it this way, and we can be proactive, and it could be right, done the right way. So that'll be my
I'd like to hear, I I I, I I'm always about, you know, pumping money into the to the uh, local community, but I'd like to hear from um, basically, the 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 utilities department to see if they really need this, uh, and and also managing. I mean, obviously, we don't have a lot of funds right now, but just, I just wanna hear your take on it. Um, I I don't think it's wrong to to look at it, I just wanna, I I'd rather hear from you guys before we go down an RFP or an RFP, I'd like to I'd like to hear your plan first, if that's okay.
If I may, mayor, uh, part of the problem, councilman, we having to recruit people, because of the salary we pay. We still have probably forty-plus vacancy in utilities, we can't find people to work. Uh, and so, yes, we, that every every little bit help, but we also need to look at our own, so we can attract qualified people, we we can't find people.
And and if I may, Ria, that's why I'm saying, as a, as use basis, if we use them, we pay them, or we bring in that subcontractor. If we actually hire everybody, and we're at forty, and we know need them, guess what, we don't spend a dime. It's basically only as an S use, if we need it, we pay them, if not, before that, we don't even have to go out for an RFP by the time the emergency happens. You have a surplus of twenty or thirty people on standby from a subcontractor to say, you know what, they're gonna help you guys out, remedy the situation.
Councilman, last five year, we we added probably seven to ten thousand new accounts, we didn't put a single more people in utilities. So we need to grow our utility system also, because we didn't have money, and so those are the things. And also, because of, um, and I'll be very, I talk to you all the time, that twelve-dollar increase killed us, because now we have truck driver. We wanna pay them fourteen dollar, and the laborers make twelve dollar.
And and I know, Ria, but at this point, and I know, Ria, because I was adamant, I was fighting for that, but at this point, we're in emergency meeting, I can't go into a budgetary issue. But you know, I'm the champion for that one, trust me, I'll put an item on the agenda for next time.
We 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 will go out on on, to hire a contractor, we do have contractor for other works, it's just the utilities, when line breaks, these are this contractor doesn't take care of this kind of issue, they wanna build the new lines. Uh, because there are so many unknowns, but we can, we will go out.
We'll put it out there, we'll see, somebody might wanna step up to the plate, maybe it it's feasible. Uh, who knows, I mean, but at least I'm just trying to alleviate the pressure on our guys that are working out tonight. And in the future, that they don't have those considerations before we go into the budgetary stuff.
Yes, sir, we will.
Mr. Eads, go ahead, please, sir.
Yeah, so if if we can, I mean, again, that's gonna be a budget question, talk for sure, I know what council member Rodriguez is asking for, I don't mind always having the availability to go is is one that we do have to explore, because as we are growing as a city, our utilities has to grow with it. And so we have to force ourselves to continue to think that way, so we have to pay the correct amounts, for sure, we have to staff it up correctly, and especially an enterprise fund where we are are being paid uh, for a service that we need to render, so I think, you know, during our budget talks, I'd love to have a conversation about this, because this is one of the key areas that that growth equates to service requirements, and so as as we get growth, we have to tack on that's a budget conversation.
And and it's a cost-free solution that council member Rodriguez is saying right now, right, it's cost-free, it doesn't cost to send anything right now to go find out, see if somebody's even willing, so, I just don't
Question, is it? Yes, y'all listen, papers say aye? Any opposed, uh?
Can anyone turn on the cameras to the there?
Yes, uh, council members, Gutierrez, Torres, and and Mark Martinez. Uh, we're taking a vote, please, and turn on your cameras, so we can see.
I'm in favor, and uh, councilman, Matt Cury Martinez is in favor as well.
Okay, uh, okay, see, oh, there, yeah, there he is, uh, okay, thank you, Jim. So, and and
Just quickly, let me hear that.
This as well, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Is lotion has a majority anyway here, uh, yeah, I don't see council member Torres, uh, so uh, motion carries, thank you. Uh, uh, any other matter on the water issue?
Oh, no.
And and if not, I I know we, you know, there's a, this emergency agenda item says of public health is vaccination, uh, can can we talk about the vaccination, because it does has postponed some of these plans that we have, is that something that it it's, I can be also discussed under this emergency uh, agenda? And and I call legal, I guess, to to clarify that for us.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, in my opinion, this is not an issue that's on the agenda, I think it's limited to the uh, issues pertaining to mitigation of power and water outages.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
What I can say, mayor, just, and I don't know if you're going there, but I can uh, actually connect the dots if you if you want, we have been told by the state that because of weather conditions, the distributions are delayed. Uh, as per state already, they've already told us, further allocations will be delayed. Not gonna go into current allocations, process, that kind of stuff, but what I will say is that we've already been notified by the state officially. For obvious reasons, transportation issues, uh, allocations will be slower than we expect.
Storm, yes, yes, Dr. Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, um, one of the things that I I think we need to look at, and I think, Mr. Eads, uh, um, I I sent them a text earlier, is that uh, in that same, um, same email that was sent out by the governor. Uh, it talks, uh, they they talked a little bit about um, FEMA assistance in some of these repairs, um, infrastructure, critical infrastructure repairs. Uh, especially during line breaks, and Uh, especially during line breaks, and so we may want to, uh, I know management's probably gonna do it, but I I just wanna reemphasize that we need to be looking. Uh, to federal dollars for these repairs, um, roads. Um, as well as uh critical um uh water pipes that might have broken, tanks that might have broken, any kind of infrastructure, it looks like there's gonna be federal funds. Available, especially because this has been declared uh an emergency, uh, and and so just, um, just to be on the lookout for that that grant opportunity, I think it's seventy five percent federal, twenty five percent local match. So this might be an opportunity for us to do that, um, so, and I know, mayor, you're big on FEMA, so something that I know is dear to your heart.
Okay, uh, yeah, that's, and and management, I'm sure you you heard it and and you'll follow up. Okay, uh, any other matter or business before this this council? And then now is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, Mayor Proten, discussion, not heard, all those in favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, not heard, not seen, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your participation. And and for the public as well, for viewing and also for their their enlightenment as well, thank you.